Good morning, everybody. I'm called to order the special joint city council planning commission meeting for July 24th, 2021. We'll do a little call, Assistant City Manager Miller.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brooks. Councilmember Erickson Dahl.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Ory.
Here.
Councilmember Andrew Krangga.
Here.
Planning Commissioners, excuse me, I don't have as much experience with your asking. Commissioner Bezon.
Here, very good.
Commissioner Cutson.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Lambert. Commissioner Alala.
Here.
Commissioner Brackes. Commissioner Crank.
Here.
Commissioner Ralph.
Here.
Commissioner Tagle.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum present. I'll move that we, the Troy City Council, everybody excuses the absence of Mayor Pro Tem Theresa Brooks at the special joint meeting between city council and planning commission on Saturday, July 24th, 2021, due to being out of the county.
This is why.
Move by the chair, it's brought by Councilmember Chamber Krangga, that we excuse the absence of Mayor Pro Tem Theresa Brooks. Any discussion? We have a vote, Mr. Brunner.
Huh? Sorry?
Run through the vote for the excuse of Theresa. Just the, just the council members.
Thank you. Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Dahl.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Ory.
Yes.
Councilmember Andrew Krangga.
Yes.
Motion carries. City Attorney, I can't remember, we need to excuse the absence of the planning commissioners.
The planning commissioners should, you don't need to?
No. I've heard that before.
Okay.
That's been 60 years or... All right. Well, first up on the agenda, public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? And, Mr. Brunner, were there any pre-submitted public comments?
No, never had.
Okay. We'll move on then. This is the end of the special meeting. Notice it's D1, one agenda item today, it's planning and zoning essentials. I'll turn it over to City Manager Miller in a second. We'll then turn it over to somebody else upstairs. But I just want to thank you all for being here this morning. Obviously, it's a Saturday morning in summer, and it's good to see so many of us here. At least the rain is keeping us from wanting to be outside. So, I'll say what I said, I think, I think it was early February of 2020, before the pandemic. Prior to, right in this room, prior to COVID, the biggest issue in our city that's keeping on everybody's mind were development issues. And we certainly have a, we continue to have those challenges, and I think as we come out of COVID, those, those will come back to the forefront, they already are in many ways. So if you go down with planning commission, you've had a lot of, a lot of work over the past year and a half. And we are also fortunate to have some new planning commissioners as well. We weren't at that joint meeting back in February 2020. And we have fewer council members as well that just haven't had a lot of planning things coming forward. So here we are. I'm looking forward to this. Again, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Miller to get things going. And if we don't have microphones, nobody has a way to ask questions, it's such a moving language. Do speak up for, if it's somebody being recorded, anything that's said in here is complicated, so we want to make sure it's important.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for showing up on a Saturday. It is actually rather difficult to schedule something like this, and you're lucky to get it in. Unfortunately, we have a few members of local planning commission, one member, not of the planning commission, not a member of the council. And here in the city of Troy, we're real strong believers in training and education and continuing that. And so, I thought it would be a good idea to provide a training and have a baseline in both city council and planning commission the same. So as you may or may not know, I am a member of the American, American Planning Association, and I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. We're also members of the local chapter, Michigan Association of Plans. It's a local chapter of APA. And also Brent and Ben are members, and also Rod. So I specifically requested Rod because I knew Rod had familiarity with the city of Troy. He was the lead consultant on the Big Beaver Corridor, so I, and I, I was trying to guess the first time I met him, and maybe, I think, Thomas in the fall of 1989, probably. So Rod, Rod, besides being a good planner, recognized nationally, and at this day, both with his previous career to Ory, now give it to Webster. He's a very good person. Didn't you live a little bit in the city of Troy?
I did, for a short time, yeah.
And he's also a fantastic photographer.
Oh, thanks.
Depends what's I, but I just want to turn it over to Rod, and then your local managers.
We do, we do. Well, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for taking time out. It is kind of nice that it's raining, so you don't miss the fact that you're missing out on a Saturday morning. But yeah, we have a lot of material to go through. Just a couple of things, keep in mind that you do have copies of all of the slides in your packet, so if there's some, something you want to go back and reference, you don't have to worry about trying to take notes necessarily, you can just supplement anything you want to. Feel free to eat, feel free to get up and go and back if you have to go grab something to eat, or go to the restroom, whatever. This is, this is a, this is a, there's a lot to go through here, and if you've got to do that, just do it. We want everybody to be comfortable. We will have times for questions as well, you'll, we'll have some question breaks, and we can try to answer your questions as well, but we're looking forward to this program. This is, this is a program, it's kind of a, we, it's a planning and zoning essentials, and Michigan Association of Planning has a lot of different types of training programs. So you can request others if you're interested in other topics. This one is planning and zoning essentials, and we've, and I'll get into the, to the overall outline, but we've, we've, we've morphed together some different programs to try to customize this for, for where you are in your, in your process. So I'm going to go ahead and start going through the slideshow here. So Michigan Association of Planning is headquartered in Ann Arbor. This is contact information just for your, and as Mark mentioned, it's a chapter of the American Planning Association. And this is me. Mark mentioned the Big Beaver Corridor study. This is a project I was very honored to be involved with for the city of Troy back around Very proud of the results of that and, and the work that's in there, and had a great time. Is that, is that, it's not on? It was on a minute ago.
Is that? Okay.
Can, can everybody hear me okay?
I just want to check my camera.
Okay. Yeah, well, this is, this, I have this for the, for the other ones. So this one actually does, is just for the room.
Oh. Everybody here okay? Yeah.
Okay. Because I might wander a little too away from the mic. Okay. So just a little bit about the Michigan Association of Planning. It is a nonprofit, it was established in 1945, and it is a chapter of the American Planning Association. It has almost 4,000 members, so it's a very large organization, one, probably one of the largest, if not the largest, in the entire country in terms of membership-based organization. And you can join if you're not a member. If you're a member, hopefully you're enjoying the educational materials you receive, but if not, you can join.
Are you a physician or a doctor?
Good. And you have in your packet today, you've got a certificate that says you were here and you participated, you've got a workshop evaluation, which we hope you'll fill out, there's the map publication catalog, the official training workshop catalog, a copy of the PowerPoint, and then a reference book, the Planning and Zoning Essentials Reference Book, which is a very nice resource to have to, to look back upon after this session is completed. So let's go ahead and jump right in. Here's our agenda. So we're going to start off with some basic information about what is planning and the roles of the, of the planning commission, and what's involved with creating a successful master plan. We're going to, our breaks will, we'll see how the breaks go in terms of timing with, with food and everything else, so we'll just be flexible on when those occur. We do have a section on housing, which I think is going to be interesting to discuss housing and housing options, and what's going on in, in the market from a housing perspective. Then we're going to get into zoning, we're going to get into zoning basics, we're going to talk about development reviews, making effective decisions, risk management, and then putting it all together. So it's a lot of material to cover, but hopefully you'll find it interesting. I know, hopefully, hopefully your eyes don't glaze over at some point, but maybe we'll stand up and down and try to keep you interested in, in the program here. So it's, and, and I think one of the key things about this program is we do want you to be ready to participate, and that means we may be discussing certain items, you know, you may get it, we've got certain questions we're going to pose, we want you to actually have a participatory role in this as we go through. So hopefully it's not just four hours of listening to me. Okay, so we're going to start off with the basics. What is planning? And we're going to go, whoops, we're going to go right to the American Planning Association, and let's talk about what the APA says good planning is. Good planning helps create communities that offer better choices for where and how people live. Planning helps communities to envision their future, it helps them find the right balance of new development and essential services, environmental protection, and innovative change. That's quite a mouthful, and it's also quite an undertaking. You know, you, you look at these elements, new development, essential services, environmental protection, innovative change, those are sometimes elements that are clashing with one another. And that's kind of the magic of planning and addressing those issues at a community level is finding a way for all of that to work together in a way that's harmonious and consistent with your own community goals and objectives. And every community is unique, so planning is going to be a little bit different in every community, because every community is made up of different people who have different goals and different vision for how the community is going to look as it evolves. So why do we plan? Well, we, a couple of key things. We want to make sure that we've got the quality of life that we care about, and we want to maintain that in our communities. We want to foster a shared vision for the community, we want to assist in the protection of property rights. If you live in a single-family home, you don't want a stamping plant opening up next door to you, you want to have some type of protection, so if, because if that happened, you probably would see a negative impact on your, on your, on your property values, and planning does help to protect property values, to promote economic development, and to increase the level of certainty regarding certain future developments. So that if you've got a plan, you've got a zoning ordinance that's based upon that plan, there'd be an expectation that new development, as it occurs, is going to fall in line with that. So that's, that, there's some, hopefully, level of comfort within the community if, if you're doing all those things right, that you're seeing that, that, that chain of continuity with a certain level of consistency with future development. So let's talk about the planning commission. Planning commission is an appointed body. You were selected for a reason, and, and part of it is, the, the goal in, in the enabling legislation is that the planning commission represents diverse interests in the community. It's not everybody that thinks exactly the same way, or has the same background. The intent is to be representative of your community. And this training hopefully will help you in making some effective decisions as planning commissioners. I like to always remind those who are involved in planning that really planning should be inspirational. It, it does create opportunities, and it sets the stage for change. When you're about, I think you're about to embark on a master plan update, that's one of the greatest things and the most important things that you can do as a, as a planning commission, is to create a new master plan. And you can set the stage for how this community is going to change and evolve, and you should be excited about that. You should think that this is our opportunity to really take a hard look at the community and to potentially set the stage for making sure we're ready for all of those things that are happening over the next 10 to 20 years, and we're prepared for those, and we're getting the quality development that we really want to see within the community. So the authority comes from the state. All local governments get their authority from state enabling legislation. We have two key statutes here, the Planning Enabling Act, which establishes the ability to have a planning commission and assigns them duties, and then we have the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which enables the development and administration of a zoning ordinance. So we'll, we'll talk about those more as we go through our presentation. So the Michigan Planning Enabling Act establishes the creation of the planning commission, creating and adopting master plans, what are the rules, it sets that forward, it establishes the ability to do capital improvement planning, public improvement approvals, and subdivision regulations and reviews. And then the Zoning Enabling Act goes beyond that master plan, so you have that basic duty of the master plan and the long-range planning. With the Zoning Enabling Act, we get into drafting and adopting the zoning ordinance, because the statute says that if you have a planning commission, the planning commission is responsible for drafting zoning language, zoning map changes, and zoning text changes. And then those have to be approved by city council, because it does have the force of law, but the origination of that comes from the planning commission. There's the authority for rezonings and conditional rezonings, there's zoning approvals, so the various types of approvals, like special land uses, plan unit development, site plan review, open space preservation, purchase of development rights, which primarily applies in agricultural areas, and then the zoning board of appeals, so the, the ability for you to actually indicate that you may have a practical difficulty and you're seeking some type of relief or appeal from a decision or from some provision in the ordinance. So the authority and responsibility, studying current planning issues, that's, that's what you're doing right now, you're staying abreast of some of the, some of the trends as, as a planning commission and as a, as a council member, it's, I think it's important to, to stay up to date, and be aware of other planning entities in your community. You know, you're, you may be on the planning commission or city council, but keep in mind, you may have, and you do have a downtown development authority, a historic district commission, a corridor improvement authority, Parks and Recreation Commission, brownfield redevelopment, there's other state agencies, county agencies, all of these entities are all doing some type of planning, and hopefully you can reach out to them and understand what planning they're doing that might affect your community, and have that coordination as you're updating your master plan. Any questions on what I've covered up to this point? Okay. So now we're going to talk about the master plan, and what are some tips to creating a successful master plan? This is a quote from Ralph Waldo Emerson, "The future belongs to those who prepare for it." And, you know, it's, it's, it, there's a lot of truth to that. We can, we can be reactive, or we can actually try to make something happen. And if you craft a plan that has a vision, and then you actually take that vision and act to make it reality by amending your zoning ordinance and spending your city funds to make certain improvements, and try to, and, and going out and trying to attract that type of development to your community, then you're truly enabling a vision and then actually making it become reality. So what is your master plan? So a master plan is a land use and infrastructure plan that sets forth goals, objectives, and policies for community growth or redevelopment over the next 10 to 20 years. So that's generally the horizon, looking out 10 to 20 years. You're looking at changes in land use, and then obviously, when land use changes, you've got to have infrastructure there to support it, and then all the complexities of what's involved with, and how, how land use and, and transportation and infrastructure impacts other resources within your community. And obviously, it's much deeper than this, but it's a general description. So what we try to do with a master plan is we want to identify and analyze existing conditions. Where are we? What's our, what's our current state of, of the city, so to speak? Then promote cooperation between, between stakeholders towards common goals, communicate those goals and priorities, and then guide long-range development in the community for, for 20 years. Once approved, your plan is going to be your description of your past, present, and future. And then this process is going to bring together a range of people of differing viewpoints, and hopefully you can end up with it, with a common ground and a common vision that sets forth what you want to be as your community evolves. And I mentioned other levels of planning. This is, this slide's a pretty good example of what, what might be going on in, in types of planning that you should be aware of. Some, some planning takes place at the watershed level, so for example, the Clinton River watershed might be a good example of, there's planning that takes place just to protect that watershed. You have regional planning, so we're in the SEMCOG region, there's seven county regions, so there's planning that goes on at that level. There's, we're in Oakland County, so there's planning level activities that may take place there. Then you may have multi-jurisdictional planning, sometimes different communities get together and plan together, joint venture work. You have municipal planning, that you're, what you do here within the city of Troy. And then sometimes corridor planning, sometimes you're looking just at, like the Big Beaver Corridor was a perfect example of corridor planning. And then district and sub-district, you may be looking at specific areas that need special attention within the community. So, your master plan. Key elements are, what do you have? So that's your background and your existing conditions. What do you want? That's where you have your public input, you establish goals and objectives, and then you ultimately develop your future land use plan. And then how do you get there? That's your recommendations, your implementation strategies, and your zoning plan, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a second. So why do we need a master plan? Why is this important to the community? Well, I'm just going to run through a couple of slides here, just to highlight some of the key reasons. We want to increase understanding through participation, and that means we want the public involved in this process. We want them to understand all of the important issues that you're facing in this community, and we hope that there's an understanding of the challenges and the opportunities that are available here. We want to promote coordination on development and redevelopment proposals. That means government, citizens, developers, all together, trying to understand what those challenges are and what we can do to make them work within the community. To protect and enhance community character. You have unique areas within this city that are unique to Troy, and I, and you may want to take those and keep them like they are, or you may want to change them and have them evolve into something a little bit different. These are all things you can address within your master plan. To develop a shared vision for quality of life for all residents. To participate or anticipate and, and plan for solutions to emerging issues. Some issues, we didn't, you know, there's land uses that didn't exist 10 years ago or 20 years ago. Things are changing, and that's part of the process here, is recognizing that there are new uses and new challenges, and how do we work those into the fabric of our community? To support community efforts for grants and funding. One of the things we find as communities is when we go to seek for funding from, at the federal or state level, you have a much better chance of getting funding if the idea or the concept you're going after is supported by your master plan. When your master plan says, "We want to have this," and then you're seeking funding, and you can show there's that connection or that nexus between those, a lot of times you have to have that really to score highly on, on grant applications, and so that's what you're trying to do. This is a really important time to get those ideas in your master plan, so that when you are applying for that funding, you could hopefully increase the likelihood of receiving a high score, and ultimately the money you need to construct what you're looking to construct. To preserve and protect our natural environment. We have important resources in our communities, and many of those need to be preserved, and, and others may be impacted, but we want to make sure they're impacted in a way that's reasonable and not so detrimental. You know, we're always going to, we're not going to save every tree, we're not going to save every wetland, but what we do want to do is look at those resources, how important are they, what can we do to, to have them work within the development community, and how can we see that the, the type of development that occurs is consistent with the vision we have in the community? To enhance or designate unique and special areas. There's a lot of attention now in the planning community to, to placemaking. More and more people are looking for places that are unique, or places where they can gather, they feel comfortable as, as pedestrians, where they can engage in conversations, and that's done through thoughtful planning and thoughtful design, and incorporating that, those, those types of elements into your plan. Creating the legal basis for zoning, subdivision design, and capital improvements plan. Yours, your zoning ordinance shall be based upon a plan. And so when your zoning ordinance is challenged, if somebody comes to you and is asking for a rezoning, and it's not consistent with the master plan, and you turn them down, and then they go to court and they try to challenge that, you're in a much better place in court if you can show the judge, yes, this is what our master plan says, and our action was consistent with the master plan. If you start to deviate from that, then what's going to happen is other developers are going to, may challenge you, and then they'll say, "Oh, here you didn't follow your master plan, here you didn't follow your master plan, here you didn't follow it. Why should I have to follow the master plan with my request?" Because the city doesn't really care about their master plan. And there have been communities that have gotten in a lot of trouble because they continually make zoning decisions that aren't consistent with what the vision of the plan is. So this is really the time to look at your future land use map and make sure you feel comfortable with it as a long-range guide, because your zoning decisions really should follow that and be consistent with that future land use plan. So guiding local government decisions, that's exactly the perfect segue. It's when those decisions need to be made, turning to that master plan as your guide. So a lot of times you hear, you know, "I really like this community, it's fine the way it is, why do we have to do anything? Why can't we just keep everything exactly the way it is now?" Well, change is coming. Whether you like it or not, there's going to be new, new land uses, there's going to be new proposals, maybe from the state or the federal government for some infrastructure improvement, widening a roadway, building some new facility, there's going to be a developer that's going to come to you with a idea for a project. All of these things are, are going to happen, and it's inevitable, you can't do anything about it. So you're in a much better position to be thinking about what are those possibilities and incorporating that into, into your planning documents, and then continually revisiting it, because you may find, and we'll talk about this in a minute, but you, you have to review your plan every five years according to state statute. You don't have to change it, but you have to review it. And you can do it more often. So if you find that there are elements within your community that are rapidly changing, you may do a review even in a shorter duration of time than, than the minimum of five years. So keeping it fresh, keeping it in the front of your activities, having the planning commission go through, once you've adopted this new master plan, hopefully you're going back to that multiple times to revisit, what can we do to implement it? Okay? So it's a good idea to, at a minimum, once a year, revisit your plan, hopefully maybe even every six months. Go in and see, okay, where are we now? What have we done? What can we do in the next six months to implement another segment of that, of that master plan? Okay, let's talk about some of the legal basics related to the master plan process. So the Michigan Planning Enabling Act establishes that makeup of the planning commission, it tells you about the components, there's certain basic components that are, that can be part of a, of a master plan, it tells you how you can adopt that plan, what the procedures are, it has that five-year review we just talked about, and it also requires that the planning commission prepare, prepare an annual written report to the governing body. So the five-year review is mandated, and once again, that doesn't mean you have to update your plan, it just means you should take a look at it and see if you think it's still current, and take a look at what's happening. Identify, some things you may do is you may not amend the entire plan, you may just amend a special area, for example. You may find, oh, we do really, we're having a challenge in this section of our community, we need to do a special area plan just for this. Kind of like the Big Beaver Corridor study, you just looked at a corridor. That, that still satisfies your ongoing planning needs and your planning responsibilities by looking at individualized areas. And then you can basically take the position, the rest of our community plan is in good shape, we don't need to amend it. So you have that kind of flexibility with, with meeting the requirements of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. So here's a question, how many of you have been involved in a five-year review of a, of a master plan? Good. So you, so you understand a little bit what that's like. Well, it is important that when you do that, that you also document it in the minutes, and we'll, we'll talk about that as we go through. The annual report is also a good activity to look back on what you've done in the last year, all the plans that you've reviewed, any zoning ordinance amendments that you've recommended, and other changes. So that's an excellent opportunity to, to, to reflect on the work that you've done. We're talking about the process a little bit. This happens to be the view out from my office. My office is in downtown Detroit, right on Grand Circus Park. I actually have this bust of Daniel Burnham, that's what you're seeing here. Daniel Burnham is considered to be the father of American city planning. He was an architect and a city planner, responsible for the Colombian exposition planning that was done in, in Chicago in the late 1800s that led to the transformation of the Chicago waterfront from basically a rail yard to a spectacular public space. So he, his firm actually designed the David Whitney Building, so I've kind of got him positioned looking out over the David Whitney Building, and he also designed the, the Dine Building, which is now the Chrysler House downtown. So Daniel Burnham has his, his mark here in Detroit as well. And he also consulted on the, on the plan in the midtown area to create a cultural and arts center that ultimately led to the DIA and the library and all those spectacular and all those spectacular public structures being built. And that was influenced by that city beautiful movement that came out of the Chicago World's Fair. And so Daniel Burnham is, is someone that has had a significant influence on planning here all over the country really, but even in Detroit. So I just thought I'd mention that. So here, let's talk about our planning process. And you'll see a lot of circles because the whole idea with planning is it's supposed to never really end. Okay? You're continually going through this process. So we're starting off with what do we have? That's our research and analysis, our snapshot of what our community is. What do we want? That's our vision and our goal setting. How do we get there? That's our plan. Getting there is the implementation, the action strategies. And then is the plan working? That's the ongoing monitoring of the success of the plan. So now we go into a little bit more detail. So we're going to kind of start up here at the top and make our way around the process. So first, we're reviewing the master plan. This, this would be step one in the process. So the Michigan Planning Enabling Act says, at least every five years after the adoption of the plan, planning commission shall review the master plan and determine whether to commence the procedure to amend the master plan or adopt a new master plan. So you've got a number of options. You review your plan, you say it's fine. You review your plan and say, we're going to make an amendment of some sort. Or you review it and say, we're going to throw the whole plan out and start all over and just, we need, we need a total new vision for our community. So those are some, some of the options that you, that you, that you face when you come up on that five-year review. So some things to consider when reviewing the plan. The age and format of the plan. You really want it to be digital. I mean, most communities do have theirs, but a lot of them still don't. Is there new data available? Do you have new, we're about to have some new census data available. Okay, so that's always, that's always exciting. That only happens every 10 years where you get the full data available. Natural features, economic and development data. Has there been significant changes to the local economy? Did you lose a major employer? Did you gain a major employer? What about COVID-19 impacts? What impacts have those had on your community? And how are those going to impact how you look at your master plan? Changes to local institutions, libraries, schools, post offices, art facilities, recreation facilities. There's, there's a lot of changes that could be occurring that are important enough where you, they may be impacting your long-range planning. And then new transportation facilities and roadway enhancements. Those are always big ones. They can really, you've had a lot going on in the Big Beaver Corridor recently with your I-75 interchange. I mean, those, those are, those are transformational changes in terms of how that looks and how it functions. Review the existing master plan for relevance. So that's where we get to that decision of whether we reaffirm, amend, or adopt. So what are some best practices for your five-year plan review? You want to either, when you're reaffirming the plan, the master plan review and its findings will be recorded in the minutes by the planning commission. The validity of the plan must be reaffirmed. So it's not so much as we just look at and you say it's fine. You actually need to pass a motion that you have thoroughly reviewed your master plan and determined that it should be reaffirmed and that there's no need for updates if you're choosing to take that route. Record that in the minutes and make sure that's part of your, of your ongoing record. In terms of the five-year plan amendment, there's some things you can look at. Is it appropriate to maybe consider, is this the time to add content about complete streets? Back in 2010, the state statute was amended for municipalities to actually take into consideration the concept of complete streets. That is that our, our road network system needs to really accommodate all users. It doesn't mean all users are going to be on every roadway necessarily, but that you have a system that accommodates all users. And so you may find that your plan does or does not address complete streets at all. And so when you're looking at your five-year review, you may say, hey, we really haven't addressed it. Maybe this is a time to amend it to address complete streets. You may want to add an economic development plan, for example. You may want to create a sub-area or corridor plan. You may want to identify key redevelopment sites. A lot of that's happening now through the guidance of the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. Many municipalities are now looking at redevelopment sites. And then if you go through that process and then follow through with additional action, you could potentially have those targeted on the MEDC website and be available for funding in order to get assistance to maybe help the redevelopment process on those sites. Are there, maybe you want to develop a plan for your commercial nodes or perform a housing study or a special plan for, to address housing issues. Incorporate health considerations. Some communities are addressing their ordinances through health, health planning. Some are looking at food systems. Some are doing sustainability plans, resiliency plans to be resilient from change, climate change and from flooding. There's, there's so many different elements that you can address in a plan depending upon what your needs are in your community and what the challenges are within your community. When we look at sub-area plans, they are typically narrow in scope. They're focusing on a limited geographic area or on limited issues. We try to develop plans that are flexible and that are there to supplement the plan. And these can satisfy the five-year update requirement. And typically, they are less costly than doing an entire master plan update. Okay, now we want to get organized. So you've reviewed your plan. What you need to do is you have what we call planning to plan. So we're getting ready to plan. There are certain things we have to do. We actually have to notify surrounding communities, certain agencies, utilities and the like that you're about to embark upon a master plan update. So there's a notice that goes out. It'll go to the Regional Planning Agency, SEMCOG as well. And so that tells everyone that if you want to be involved in the City of Troy's planning process, they've started it and they can now follow with what you're going to do. Maybe, maybe some surrounding communities will want to come to some of your meetings. We typically try to invite surrounding communities to come to the public open houses and see if they want to have any input on common border land use issues. Certainly you'll want to look at those common border master plans and see what, what's happening across the street and on those border areas and see if that has any impact on what you want to do in your community. So we have our notification, notice of intent to plan. And then the master plan's created. Then we have the draft plan that is submitted to the legislative body. So the city council sees it. And the planning commission has to ask permission from the council to then distribute the draft plan for comments. And if the council believes it's ready to go, then it gets distributed by the community to all those same surrounding communities and other agencies and SEMCOG and all the other entities. And they have an opportunity to provide comments to the, to the city. So the planning commission then considers those comments, holds a public hearing. It has to be at least 15 days' notice in the newspaper. Then the planning commission can take action to adopt the plan. Now, the legislative body, that, that can be the end of the process right there. However, there was a provision added into the statute a few years back where the legislative body can, if it wants to, also adopt the plan. Okay? So that's, that's totally up to the community. In some communities, the city council will go ahead and adopt the plan as well as the planning commission. In others, it just stops with the planning commission. And then the community distributes the plan. So once you're done, all of those surrounding communities and all those entities that you noticed in the very beginning, they all now get a copy of your plan and have it available. And they're, they're aware that you are now done with your planning activity. Any questions on this process? Yes?
I did a question from earlier.
Oh, sure.
So thank you so much for being here.
Oh, yeah, my pleasure.
So to live all year, that every five years or state statute, we have to always look at the master plan. I heard from someone with a planning background that it's probably not universal just every year to revisit it. Just especially if it seems to be in reaction to developing the light, it's more than you love to walk. But I hear you saying that actually it can be literally look at it every year.
Well, yeah, that's a good question. And I think looking at it every year to implement the plan makes sense. That's what I was referring to mostly is making sure you're actually using it as your guide and to implement. But if you've got rapid changes occurring, and I don't think this happens very often, but most communities don't amend their plans more often than every five years. And most of them don't amend it every five years. They, they have to do the review. But there's, there's, there's rarely an instance where you would adopt a plan and then three or four years later, you would go and adopt a brand, another plan. I, I just, you just don't see that. But there could be some rare moment where you have some incredible change within your community that you may want to do that. But I, I think that would be a very rare occurrence. But yes, revisiting the plan all the time for implementation, that makes a lot of sense because you're, you want to continually be acting to implement the plan.
Other thing is the time span of a plan to be, have a vision of like 10 to 20 years.
Yes.
If the city is going.
Yes.
Does it depend if the city is the size of Troy or the city is Detroit or is it Tosi in terms of that, that vision? Or is it just that best practice for any community to have a, whether 10 years or 20 years?
I think it's really best practice for any community. I think the statute speaks to going out to 20 years. I mean, it doesn't mean you can look beyond 20 years if you want to. You don't have to stop there. I think it's a little, it gets pretty difficult to go beyond that just because we don't really know all the changes that are going to happen to a municipality over time. And 20 seems to be a good target. And so, but I, I think all communities really need to be looking out 10 to 20 years. I think that's good practice, yes. No question over there?
You mentioned distributing the draft plan at some point to other communities or other entities. Is that to give them a notice? Or are you going to solicit comments?
Yes, you are soliciting comments. By statute, you don't have to do anything with the comments other than read them and take them into consideration. You don't have to write them back and say, we, you don't have to respond to them. But you, you should read them and take them into consideration and determine if there's anything there that might influence what you want to do within your community. Yes?
Thank you, Monsieur.
Yes, my pleasure.
You, I'm just curious, if communities such as Troy, what kind of planning change you laid into policy changes has a lot of things happened? Curious to know that.
Well, you know, one of the things that a lot of communities are starting to do now, we're doing some of this and some of, now with some of the mapping tools that we have, we're starting to look at vulnerable populations. For example, you might look at where your aging population is within the community and how that relates to where your flood areas are located, where your flood zones are. Because if those are going to potentially expand and grow, that could be a population that could be impacted by that. And maybe you want to incorporate some policies on how you're going to address that in the future. If we all of a sudden see that our flood zones are going to start changing and evolving, what might be due to, to impact that? Would there be a need to address some type of physical development element in your, in your zoning ordinance so that there's protection built in to, to provide for more flexibility? Would you want to incorporate more rain gardens, for example, into the design low-impact so that more storm water is absorbed on site? You know, it could go on and on and on. And to, but it, I think a lot of communities now are really looking at, at resiliency particularly, particularly to storm elements and changes in the climate. Because we see it all, I mean, when you look at, when you read the news, and last, I think in the last month or two, it's been quite jolting what you're seeing happening, going on across the world. And the, the temperature change is real. I mean, the temperature change is going, it's going up. We're seeing these extreme flooding and storm events. And those are things that you can take into consideration and try to talk, have a discussion in your community. How should we best deal with those types of, of changes? And what can we do, at least in the planning realm, to address them? Yes?
So looking at yours, I can think of a number of really significant things that you would have to plan for. And obviously, there's going to be people that are kind of head of line and already looking at those issues. How do you look at resources about what they can? Maybe an example of that would be, I don't know. I mean, that's going to do the parking areas. Isn't that?
Yeah, I, I think what you'll, what you find, I mean, you've, you, there's, there are resources out there. There are other communities that are studying this. There are other organizations. Autonomous vehicles is a, is a good example. We've incorporated some sections on autonomous vehicles and the impact on, on planning into some of the master plan work we've done. And it's based upon, drawing upon research from other experts. And, you know, one of the things you may, some communities are looking at in their downtown areas is, is flexible curb space. Because what you may find is that curbs change throughout the day in terms of how they're used. They may be on-street parking during a certain number of hours. They may become areas for ride-sharing, drop, drop-off and pickup. And then they may be loading and unloading. And it may change throughout the day or depending on the day of the week. So there's a lot of different things that could come out of autonomous vehicles and changes in the way we use the transportation system. And you can start to explore those in your master plan and say, okay, we have a certain area of this community where we may want to look at flexible curbs and how we're going to designate those. Or we may want to start to look at lowering our parking requirements because we're having more ride-sharing and we're having, or more use of transit or some other elements. And then autonomous driving. That, that's one of those we have to just keep an eye on because autonomous vehicles could potentially not really have a significant impact on traffic if, if there's all one person in every autonomous vehicle. If we choose to share and have multiple people in autonomous vehicles driving around, then we're getting some benefit in reducing trips. But if all we're doing is having our own cars drive us around all over the place, it's not really going to do anything to traffic. It may even make it worse. So we don't know how, how the model is ultimately going to evolve. And will we have autonomous buses that are always out there and we'll feel comfortable and we'll be using those? And because they're regular and they're reliable, we'll use them and we won't need our cars as much anymore and then now we're going to reduce trips? That's a possibility. But we have a long way to go until we know how all of that's going to evolve and how it's going to work. Yes?
This is more from Mark and Brent, but when have you guys received your planning reports early on Saturday morning? It's not a lot of them, but when we get that, I don't remember.
January, twenty-one.
Okay. We got one in January.
You got one every year for a work that you're. I'm on the clock.
Yes?
Yes, this process, is that applicable to ending the existing master plan or just you create a whole new master plan?
Yes, it applies to both. That is the, that is the state planning process. Okay, good questions. All right, we'll have opportunity for more. We'll keep going. All right, so we've talked about planning to plan, okay? And you do want to think about how long is it going to take? What's the process going to be? What's going to be in your plan? Do we need to hire a consultant? In this case, yes, you have a consultant on board and they're going to be helping you. A lot of communities find that they really have a hard time actually doing a plan with just using their planning staff because their planning staff is so busy dealing with development reviews and other elements of running the planning department. It takes, you know, a lot of time and effort to focus on a, on a master plan update. So many communities do in fact use a consultant. And if you're using a consultant, you'll either use your consultant of record or you'll, if you don't have a consultant of record, you may go out and issue an RFP and try to solicit proposals from consultants. Are there emerging planning practices in your community that you'd like to explore? We've talked about a couple of these, but placemaking, transit-oriented design, complete streets, aging in place, equity, health and income disparities, green infrastructure, clean energy, habitat corridors. Some communities have looked at how wild animals move within the community and what you can do to actually foster habitat corridors. Food systems, do you want to work to try to have a healthy system of community gardens and sharing that within the community? Are offering food assistance to people who are in need? Sustainability, economic resiliency, community health? You can see there's a lot you can get into if you want to get into it. And it's probably overwhelming to get into all of this at one time, but what you can do is have a master plan and then maybe a few years down the road, instead of looking at all these land use issues, you're only looking at one of these issues or two of these issues. And you can, you can grow that master plan incrementally too.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So I have one minute just to the Rockford experience. I work for a foundation that's working on big cities in Michigan and all the country that addresses various issues including like building planning. But as a city of Troy, we don't have, we don't have control over it before they, when they're coming from the government. So is that something you can incorporate into master plan if you don't have as a community that's public authority?
Well, you can, if it's an issue in your community, you can address it and then try to figure out how you can work within the system of what you can do, what you're empowered to do. And you may find by going through the planning process and researching and talking to other health professionals that there are specific actions that you're not doing that you can be doing. That's the whole idea of a planning process is to understand. And that's the research that you do. And you, you are empowered to do quite a bit as a municipality. And although you're not the county health department, you can coordinate and try to make sure that those policies, as they relate to what you can do through your authority as a municipal government, are emboldened and you may be able to push the limits on what is, what other municipalities are doing if it's important to you as a community. So that's where I think you've got the ability to be as creative as you want to be as a community and push the limits on issues that are important to you. And that's why I say every community is unique in what they're going to do. Okay. So we do want to identify key stakeholders when we're starting to plan. Even those that are not normally at the table, this is probably one of the biggest challenges for everyone who does planning, is getting the community involved and particularly those who might not necessarily be involved. You know, we have, you always, I know you always have people in your community that are involved in everything. They'll come to your planning commission meetings or your city council meetings and they're the regulars, you know, they're always there. What about the people that aren't the regulars? You know, the ones that are quiet, that are just going, trying to get by, doing their, live their life? How do you get them involved? Well, you know, you should talk about that upfront. What are you going to try to do? A lot of communities are doing online components to public input as well as in-person components. When we did the Big B Recorder Study, we had, we had a public engagement with property owners. We had a public engagement with the public at large. We had engagement with design professionals. And we did a lot of different elements trying to reach out to people in the community. We did, I think we did an online survey. So, you know, there's, there's different things that you can do to try to reach out. And what some communities are doing too is actually going out into the community instead of waiting for them to come to you. When we did the, we did the master plan update for Rochester Hills, we actually set up a tent outside of Starbucks at the Village of Rochester Hills and had an open house there. So that when people were coming for their coffee or shopping, they might stop by and see what's going on with the master plan. So there's things like that you can do. Go to where the people are and you might get a better response because a lot of people aren't going to come to City Hall or just, they're just not going to do it. So, and certainly the online engagement tools, which we'll talk about in a minute. So here's a discussion question as part of this process. You know, who should be involved in the community's master plan and the update? Are there specific elements of the community that you think it's important to reach out to? People, groups? Have you had any discussions on this? Does anybody have any thoughts on, on this question? Yes?
Office building versus the input, the change of the code?
Yes, okay. Right, you have a lot of office space here, right? And you want to make sure that that, that space stays healthy and viable, right? Okay, good.
We had a joint council and DDA meeting, so actually our DDA, many of our property owners and all these large office buildings that, you know, of course is concerned that more and more we can, you know, as we have change, who is, so yes, we, we, we're continuing to engage.
Good.
Right, we have one, development, rent, none of working with the convert. Also, the residential, it's, you have the personal matter process.
Good. Good.
Residents in areas of tension that these things possibly have posed a level of stress.
Yeah, because residents in particular, they tend to come out when there's controversy, right? But when there's not controversy, they're not as likely to come out. So, but you really want to hear from them, so.
We should try to, try to see, maybe know from experience or some of the, it's not true, try to anticipate, but all of this could be tried.
Okay. Any others?
I was reminded, you know, just saw this, there are any institutions, like the Ed and Met, like you know, a number of, you know, universities based here from college to college, which can stay, have to grant. Omaha, of course, you know, those are big entities that, you know, they know what they're thinking in the future and.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Because you may find that they, you'll learn from them in terms of what their plans are. You may learn that they have a major expansion coming or they're considering it or they're acquiring property or they have a second facility that they want to, you know, some of them might share that with you. They may share it with you confidentially, but at least you'll, you'll know about it. Some may be more open because they're more public with what they can share. So those are helpful things to have and understand in the process.
You want to add some susceptible business law, you've got retail, you've got, you've taken the interest, on the multiple end, you know, those transportation issues, are we discussing transportation issues that are changing in the long term?
Absolutely. Yeah, you have, you have an incredible resource, a retail resource, and you've, you want to make sure, once again, that that's, that can continue to thrive and be resilient, right? And so those are, those are, you want to hear from them. You can reach out and say, what can we be doing to help you? You know, and have a conversation.
I think maybe that initial, we've had productive participation from the developers who actually use the master plan to build and invest a million dollars. Seems a little strange coming from me, right? But it doesn't do any good. It's going to dry out development. No one wants to do it.
Right.
It requires the, the community that tend to do a lot of developing, so if we can find a way to study, we can get there.
Well, we're going to have a discussion on housing too. And there's a lot of different housing types out there that are being built in other parts of the country, but not so much here. And that might be a discussion. If you feel like you want to see a change in that, reach out to the developers and say, what would it take for you to want to build these? The Michigan developer community is, in my experience, a bit conservative in terms of some of the types of product they like to develop. And I think sometimes having a conversation might hopefully spur some change and some evolution in the, in the housing products that are out there. I would like to see some more diversity of housing products out there, but that's just my issue. Yes?
I think we need to get plans out of credit for that to some degree already. They did that for the senior housing in twenty twenty.
Excellent.
Creating developers to their business.
Good. Yeah. And, and they appreciate it. I mean, the development community appreciates that too. Because, you know, particularly if you are responsive, to the extent you agree or can be responsive. You know, you can't always give them everything they want, but you can certainly listen and try to determine what you can do to facilitate good quality development that's consistent with your master plan, right? Okay, yes.
We're recharging some of those groups in our stuff, they just have a plan.
Good.
For example, we're going to have a global real estate forum in the White Somerset, the Rockhammers, the Longview, the officers, et cetera. We did that in two thousand eight, it was very relevant. We could all agree with you about it, it was successful. And we'll talk to other groups as well, the UTEs and the old students, et cetera.
Well, as part of that, sorry to interrupt, but we know some major landowners. They probably would not come to a meeting of a group of people, so we have to, such as Nick Ford's. I think Nick was, he's the managing partner of Somerset Collection. And the Kmart headquarters, they control that site. We, I think we have to go to them directly and talk to them. And I think also Oldham Mall, because I think on-term, Oldham Mall, just, I mean, we identified that in our first, you know, review of the master plan in two thousand ten or so, that that mall just can't keep going. It just can't.
So actually, let me ask that question next. What do you do about areas that seem a bit problematic and, you know, in terms of designing future, or think, or so I was going to ask that question? And how do you have that conversation in a way, a very delicate conversation? Because we might envision something, but they're still trying to hold on and how do you?
Yeah, they really are trying to hold on. Glenn Layman and I have had discussions with their older team and they act like putting this on seniority.
All right, well, good. You're, you're reaching out. And yeah, and some, some of those meetings will be one-on-one, I would agree. Okay, so who are, this is part of the discussion, who are your stakeholders? So they could be a number of different groups. All of these groups are, they're all, most of these groups are going to be in your community. Question is, how much will they participate? And so this is a list. I won't read through this, you can read it on your own. But you can certainly start by reaching out, letting them know this process is underway and trying to get them involved as much as possible. So what are some ways to inform? Well, you've got a number of options now, particularly with the internet, you've got even more. Newspaper posting, design charrettes, one-on-one interviews, things we've just talked about, community workshops, focus groups, surveys, a web portal, a blog, flyers and yard signs, postcard mailings, announcement at government meetings. Reminding people at, you know, planning commission can make an announcement at every planning commission meeting. Hey, we're going through this master plan process. Please go to the city's website, come to our meetings, participate, remind people. That's, that's always a great idea. Attachment to water bills, local cable access, social media, there's a lot of different ways to inform. Yes, sure.
I'm being required by law to put out signs to inform people. Like I saw when Birmingham did their update, they just, they plastered like in the parks, everybody, everywhere, like people know, there's going to be a meeting.
You are not required to do that, but you may do that. Yes?
Be the last bigger.
But you can, you know, at the, at the public library, at the Troy Library and City Hall and places, and maybe they'll let you do some of that at Somerset or other places where people go, you know? Let's, you can always ask, right? Yes?
What's a charrette?
Good question. So a charrette is a, is a public forum where you bring people together and design professionals and planners to actually plan an area out in a participatory manner, which means you, for example, may be drawing up plan concepts for a corridor and you're, you're doing that in a forum where the, where your stakeholders are in the room. And they can react instantly to design concepts. Okay, what if we do this with the road network? What if we throw in this housing option? And then you're actually changing the plan throughout a one-day or maybe a week-long process. And you modify that and ultimately come up with a plan that the group is participating in. So it's a really, it's an active design. It's, it's much more physical plan-based in its, in its, in its root. And, but it involves people actively participating in the process as the plan is created.
So the picture that had the Legos?
Yes.
That's a perfect example of charrette, you have the Legos sticking off.
A lot of times those are used when doing specific district plans, form-based codes and the like, where you really, you really want to hone in on some physical planning and details of a, of a, of a defined area or a corridor. Yes?
I'm not sure if you'd be able to answer this, but I'm just wondering, with the bloody out there, who's important in different constituencies, which are important here for, how do you balance what I think would be inconsistent responses as to, you know, what the community thinks?
That's, that's, that's your job as the planning commission. You're going to hear a lot of diverse opinions and your, your responsibility is to listen to those and then look out for the community as a whole in terms of a broad vision. And that's where, that, all of those goals and objectives that you're going to formulate, that's where those are incredibly important in crafting your plan because then you're going to have to debate some of these, these conflicting ideas. And you're going to have to do that. So it's really listening and seeing how they relate to the overall vision of the community. So that's the simple answer.
And I, we would, within that, the plan is not going to satisfy any of our executive decisions?
No, it will not. It never will. But what you want to do is indicate that you've listened. Maybe there's a piece of what someone's saying that you disagree with ninety-five percent, but there's five percent there that that could then be incorporated into your plan. And maybe you're taking, you're taking bits and pieces. I think a lot of times people understand, you know, you, someone may be environmentalist and they want no, they're tired of development. They want everything to just stay open space. Well, that's not realistic because the city couldn't afford to buy all the property and wouldn't necessarily be a good financial decision for the city to never see any future development. But what you might say is, well, we're going to look at these incredibly sensitive environmental areas that are still in private holdings and we're going to come up with a number of strategies where those might get preserved. And there's, here's one, one approach, here's another approach, here's another, and we're going to try to implement those. So there's things that you can do to show that you're listening and that you're incorporating ideas. Yes, you had a question?
At least to kind of, for your, and your council, kind of an example, the charrette is in play, Alice, trails and pathways, when we get in the bigger of the communities and we invite the members of the public. So, so, to me, exactly, if people were able to give input on several different ideas and that allowed for us to see, okay, when people talk about trails and pathways, what does that really?
Sure.
The claim report, but what will they really accept? Because we came up, we got in touch with someone, some division. But it was a constructive process that, it, it doesn't make everybody happy, their project team, but it also helped direct how we should take the next steps. And so, but it takes time. So that's like an example of some, some.
Right, yes, yes.
That we have, that I'm asking, like, that's a perfect, I don't know if you were at the charrette or you knew that that happened, but people show up if they're excited. They, they really, there were a lot of people that showed up. It was really good people. Not just from the people that always show up.
Right. All right. Good comments. All right, so in terms of community engagement, there, there is what's called a spectrum of public participation. You have informing, consulting, involving, collaborating and empowering. And we talked a little bit about this, just with some of the examples. You can, you can have the one-way, basically, public participation process. That's more of, you know, come, state your comment, leave, you know, the, it's, it has some value, but there's other ways. And the two-way we talked about is more of that participatory where there's that back and forth and people can actually hear a reaction and can see and hear and then listen to other people's views. And, and so there's, there's different, different ways we can make that happen. So the, the online tools that are now available, I think, are really helpful. We, we have planning tools available that we didn't have before. And there are people that are much more likely to use their smartphone to try to participate. And, and there's a, there's a demographic population where some of those folks probably aren't used to coming to meetings, but they might use their smartphone to participate in something that's interesting. So trying to include those types of opportunities, I think, will, will expand the reach that you have. And there are also, by the way, is, is, MAP has workshops on that too, so there's, there's certainly potential to, to expand that as well. So I've heard, we've mentioned a couple of different activities that have happened here in Troy. Are there other community involvement activities that you're aware of, different techniques that, that happened that you found to be successful that you might use in the master plan process?
Well, in the Parks and Rec Plan, a couple of years, a year or two ago, we actually sent people to go interview people at events, the Barnes Market.
Yes, sure.
Hospital, church, or anything of that nature. And just going into the parks, like people were in the parks.
That's good. I like that.
It was also, like, back to the trails, I don't know what it looked like on the back end, but I think there was a formal setup or the trails route line and people could input on all that comments. I wasn't on council setup, I think I saw what those comments were, but I don't know if that was effective from your side of it, but it seemed effective from a community side. And it was, they were like, okay, we are participating.
Good.
And I think it elicited more people to come out. I was in the area.
Right. Okay, any others that you can think of? Yes?
Just to share something that I think we're, I'd say it's a conundrum, but just something we're trying to wrestle with is recognizing, we are one of those diversities in the state of Michigan.
Right.
Recognizing that some of those communities, and I hope I said, about one of these communities, former counties, currently where some of our populations don't always feel comfortable taking a survey or, you know, coming out to meet just from their experience when they grew up and their interactions with government, that state person relationship. And trying to figure out what is the best way to make sure that we truly hear and all of this. And I mean, one thought is. And I mean, one thought is, I don't know if we're going to faith-based organizations, places of worship across the community, that's maybe potentially one. But I don't know if you have ideas in your, you know, in your experience or, you know, others as well, and we're all thinking about this. This is so, so important in Troy.
Yeah.
We have to address this.
Yeah, more and more, I think it's, when you have challenges like that, it's going out to those people, cause you're right, they are not likely to come. So can you, you know, could you have one planning commissioner go and have a booth at a faith-based organization and explain the master plan process and get some public input? Would people be willing to do something like that? If that's a group you're trying to reach out to, cause they have large groups of people attending and it's a strong representation, maybe you could do that. There's some, one of the things that some communities have done that we've been involved with is actually just creating like, almost like a little toolkit where someone in a neighborhood could be a group leader and you'd have set questions that are related to the master plan and they could invite their neighbors in and then record what the neighbors are, their responses to the questions. And then it's a really small activity, it's very neighborhood-focused and it's with people you know, and they'd be more likely to participate that way. There's a lot of different approaches, but that's, those are a couple that come to mind to try to actually go out into the, into the community and seek the input. But that might be something you wanna talk about. Okay, let's keep going. Okay, so now we're gonna assess our existing conditions. You figured out who's gonna be involved in the plan. The next part is establishing where your community is right now. So we wanna gather demographics, data, public facilities, natural features, land use. Create a community profile, really kind of a snapshot of where we are today and that becomes part of your existing conditions. So we're gonna be looking at population, employment, income, housing, education, crime data, land use, natural resources, historic sites, lots of photographs, what are the past planning documents, what's going on in adjacent communities? We talked about that before. What are the borders being planned for and how might that impact what you're doing in your community? And then trends, what are the trends? What are the demographic trends? You know, like the aging population is a huge one everywhere. Almost every community is facing an aging population. What does that mean for your planning in your community? What's going on at the developmental level? What new developments are occurring? What about regional, market, economic, funding, regulatory, all of those things? How do they impact your existing conditions? So population trends, that, certainly the aging population, but also if there's specific ethnic groups that in your community, a lot of times you find that some groups tend to favor maybe certain types of recreational facilities, some groups tend to favor other types of improvements. There's some, there's some communities that really dive deep into multicultural desires for different types of recreational facilities. For example, to try to make sure that they're responding to all of those and what they might want. There's, you can go very deep with this depending upon how much time and the budget you have and what's important in the community, but obviously all of those factors come into play. Land use trends, you probably have neighborhoods that are, a lot of your neighborhoods, you're fortunate, are very stable. You may have some that maybe aren't as stable as you'd like. Why aren't they stable? What could you be doing to strengthen those? Are there, you have retail areas that are very strong, you're gonna also have retail areas that aren't doing so well. What could be done to improve those? Those are things you're gonna wanna start identifying. Do you have blighted areas, abandoned buildings, things like that that need some attention? What might be done to enhance that? So those are all questions in land use trends. For housing, you're gonna wanna look at different housing types and how's your demographic changing and how might that impact what's gonna be marketable? You know, you talked about senior housing facilities, certainly with an aging population, you're gonna see more senior housing facilities, but are there other types of facilities that are more independent in nature that would focus to those empty nesters and help you to keep those folks in your community? I think a lot of what communities are trying to do with plans now is to, one, give the older, the aging population, the empty nesters, a place where they can go if they don't wanna maintain their larger home that they've had with their large family. They wanna downsize, but they still wanna stay here. And then their kids, where are their kids gonna live? If you, you know, we have these great schools, right? We have good school systems and we have these great secondary education, we have colleges and universities in Michigan that are top-notch and we raise our children, they go to school here, and then what happens when they go get a job? Well, a lot of times they don't stay here. Why aren't they staying here? A lot of times, one, they can't afford to live here and two, maybe the jobs aren't here that they're looking for, but you know, we do have, we have a fairly healthy economy in terms of jobs, but we don't always have a fairly, a healthy array of housing choices for those who are entering the market or maybe are at the, have stopped working and have retired and maybe don't have the same means. So those are things I think to look at and we're gonna talk about that more in the housing section. Business and economic trends. A hundred years ago, most homes had a piano in their house, okay? And that's not the case anymore. Most homes had a radio in their house. Most people, people are listening to music and listening to news by streaming and they're doing different things now. Things are evolving. What was the biggest shopping anchor in the city of Troy in 1960? Was it the same one that you have now? Things change, things evolve, all of those things, those trends, and then what's happening in terms of, you talk about eds and meds, so universities, the educational institutions, what are they doing? How are they evolving? All of those things are important to look at. Infrastructure. Well, we see infrastructure different ways, you know, the roads get the most attention cause people have to experience them. They can complain about traffic, it's visible, but there's the stuff underground that you don't see that also can also be a problem. And we're hearing about this infrastructure crisis, we've heard about all these flood, everyone's experienced some degree of flooding. What are we doing to plan for that? And what can we as planners think about? And certainly trying to address stormwater, minimizing impervious surfaces, if that's important, and that can be an important way of addressing flooding, is to try to reduce impervious surfaces. Cause when water is running off pavement, man, it's moving fast. And if you don't do something about it, you're gonna have flooding. But if you can do something more with incorporating different types of materials where, that absorb water and don't have the same runoff coefficients, those are things, if that's important, start to talk about those in the master plan. Maybe see if you can develop some goals, objectives and strategies that might lead you to a way to reduce the amount of stormwater runoff or the rate of stormwater runoff and try to serve the system in a way that's more efficient and more responsive to the climate change challenges that we have. This can get obviously very involved. Transportation systems, once again, there's a, there's always focus on roads, but what we're seeing more and more now, every community that we work in, there's an increasing support for non-motorized facilities. People wanna be able to ride the bike, their bikes, they wanna be able to have, they wanna be able to walk more, they want to be out and about, they want a healthier lifestyle. I think there's an increasing level of support for more non-motorized facilities. So I think that's a question that should be explored in a master plan, is how important that is? What can you do as a community to make that happen? It's usually all public-private, you know, you're gonna get, you can't have it happen by, with one person or one entity being responsible, but you can do a public-private. Partnership to hopefully have developers build their fair share and then the community builds its fair share and ultimately you build a network that's very responsive. Equity indicators. As you prepare your community profile, you can start to look at, are there issues where people need, maybe need some assistance or, how are things with like workforce housing? For example, you have great employment opportunities here, but can the people who are working in the offices and the industrial areas, can they afford to live here? And what if you could make it so that it was somewhat more affordable and you had more of those and their commute times then became shorter? And then you end up minimizing the traffic impact on the regional road system because people have a shorter commute to get to work. Those are, many communities are addressing workforce housing. What can we do to house the residents that are already working in our community? So that might be something you wanna look at. And obviously transit is a component of that. How do we help people who can't afford a car, can't afford to maintain one? How can they get around the community? What can we do to improve transit and work with the transit systems that we have and incorporate a land use pattern that is responsive to that? I think this might be a good time for a short break. We've been talking for a long time and why don't we take a five-minute break?
Or we just have five minutes?
All right, next up in our master plan discussion, we're gonna talk some more about assessing existing conditions and some of the tools you can use in order to accomplish that. One of the time-tested tools that planners use is doing existing condition or windshield surveys. And that's basically driving around or riding a bike or walking, but windshield obviously comes from riding your car, driving in your car and assessing the community. Sometimes you're looking at housing conditions, sometimes you're just looking at existing land use, trying to identify that or just identify issues. You can do walking audits. You may have an area where you're trying to encourage pedestrian activity, but people aren't walking there. We did a walking audit with the Big B corridor study and we walked up and down the corridor and tried to identify what some of the obstacles were and see how, were people using the system, the existing road system, how many, what did it, what did it look like? This is one that I conducted in a downtown area where we brought, we had someone in a wheelchair, someone with a stroller, trying to reflect different levels of abilities and what's it like trying to navigate yourself through a certain area of the community depending upon your ability. And you can really understand that, cause the people that had the strollers and were in the wheelchairs weren't people that normally are in wheelchairs or are pushing strollers. So it gives you a different perspective of how others have to move through the community. And so if you've got problem areas, this could be a real interesting exercise to do to try to identify some of those. You can look at your building permits, you know, what's going on with building permits? Is there a certain trend that you're seeing? Now with GIS mapping, we have so many resources available to map different conditions. You can look at census data and then public works requests, what's going on? Are there, are we seeing flooding complaints? Are we seeing other issues? Are we seeing, how about with the ZBA? Is the ZBA getting certain requests for variances that over and over again, that's the same thing? You know, are there trends there that maybe you need to be aware of? So there's a lot of things you can do. So we ultimately end up wanting to display that information using a number of tools, maps, tables, charts, photographs. More and more, we want our master plans to be as graphic as possible because people are more likely to read them if we can use these types of tools to portray the information. Any questions up to this point? All right, I'm gonna try to, we've got a lot to get through here, so we're gonna continue on identifying community issues. So once the community profile is updated, really, the planning commission needs to start talking about public input and figuring that out because you want most of your public input to come before you do your plan, right? That's the whole idea, is the public is supposed to influence the plan, not you do the plan and then say, hey, public, what do you think? That's really not what participatory planning is all about. Hopefully as a planning commission, you wanna listen and understand all of those community issues before you actually craft your plan. So public input, we're gonna supplement our existing conditions, we're gonna prioritize and expand on information we've collected and then identify assets, threats and opportunities. One of the things that can be really helpful is to do that SWOT analysis, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats in your communities. That might be something that could be a helpful exercise, even if it's just at the planning commission or council level. So we've talked about these various types of ways of getting public input, I'm not gonna go into those, but you would wanna decide what you're going to use in your master plan. Obviously you're not gonna use all of these, but there's gonna be certain types of public input venues and channels that will be available and you need to decide that before moving too far into the plan. Some of the emerging methods of communication, particularly online versions, is to allow people, you know, now that we have GIS, you can let them upload pictures, they can make comments, they can tag that to a location on a map and you can, and there's some, there's some commercial, commercially available tools that we've listed here, there are not all of them, but these are just some of them. But the ArcGIS story maps and the GIS platforms that are available really make it pretty easy to get public input and allow people to say, hey, in this area, this is a problem or I wanna see this in this area. And they can do it on their smartphones and share information with you. So when you're having public participation, it's important to try to document that, taking notes, providing opportunities for them to fill out questionnaires. If you're gonna do it through social media, trying to keep the social media information recorded and documented somehow, keeping track of the public comment that you get. A lot of times we'll get through a master plan process, we like to encourage landowners and developers, if they wanna see some type of change in an area, to put a request in for that to be evaluated. You know, give them an opportunity to say, hey, I really think this area of the community needs to change to this and this is why. And then you as the planning commission can evaluate it and see if you think it has merit. You know, reach out to them and give them an opportunity to share their ideas. So we have our community issues. Basically, by doing this type of process, you're talking about building something from the ground up. So your community issues, you have your shared vision, you have your prioritized community-driven goals, clear objectives, and then hopefully a community-supported action plan because once again, there's been an opportunity to listen, people feel like they've been heard and you've tried to incorporate their comments to the extent you can that it's consistent with the community vision. And then that SWOT analysis that we were talking about before, the strengths, opportunities, weaknesses and threats, this can really be enlightening, I think, to go through this type of process, even if it's just with, like I said, with the planning commission and council to get some perspectives on how you view the community right now and what some of the opportunities are within the community. And then, once you go through this whole process, I think the most important word on here is listen. Throughout, as an active planning commissioner, when people are talking, when they're giving you input, listen to what they have to say. And always look, try to, like, try to find the positive. And even when they're sharing, you know, when we, sometimes when we conduct public visioning sessions and we have people get together in small groups, one of the most important things is to tell people the ground rules upfront. And I think it's important to tell people that the expectation is that we're gonna have a civil discourse and that we realize everyone's not gonna agree, but we wanna be respectful of people and we want to criticize ideas, not people. So if somebody says that I believe in this and the next person says I disagree, they shouldn't be attacking the person, they should be constructively talking about the idea and what the faults and that they see in the idea. And a lot of times that requires some type of facilitation to do that, but I think we found that just telling people upfront when you're having a public input session, that the expectation is we're all going to act in a way that's respectful, that actually does set the tone and can help to actually facilitate a more beneficial dialogue. Questions on what we've covered here? Okay, I'm gonna keep going. All right, goals, objectives and strategies. So now we've gotten the public input and we have to craft this into a vision for the community. So you're talking about a broader vision, your goals are typically very broad and they just establish a tone, your objectives are realistic and achievable, so you're starting to take the goals and refine it more. And then ultimately you end up with strategies that are much more detailed and action-oriented and specific action items that start with the foundation of that goal. So the goal is a statement that generally describes in general conditions, a desired future condition. An objective is a statement that describes a specific future condition that is to be attained within a stated period of time. And then a strategy is a course of action or a rule of conduct to be used to achieve the goals and objectives of the plan. So these are all different layers of specificity and action that ultimately lead to implementation of the plan. Also, there's the concept of SMART objectives. SMART objectives follows this with the specific, the S being for specific, the M being for measurable, the A being for attainable, the R being for realistic and the T being for for time-bound. So when you're developing your objectives, you can think about these, think about the SMART acronym, and consider whether or not you think these are measuring and are following these specific goals of good SMART objectives. So we want to link those goals to the implementation and the action strategies, then prioritize them and set timeframes and assign responsibility. Really, implementation of a plan is, and I know we're going to, we're talking about how the goals and the implementation are linked together. So we're talking about the end of the document, in the middle of the document. If we always think about the document as being connected throughout, I think it helps to understand that even though you're doing goals and objectives, ultimately, you want to link those to implementation strategies once you're done with your plan. And so trying to think about that throughout the process, I think, is helpful. So now we're going to prepare our draft plan. And so the statute says a master plan shall address land use and infrastructure issues and may project 20 years or more into the future and shall include maps, plots, charts, et cetera. Okay? So that's what the statute tells us. So when we look at this, we may have population trends, existing and future land use maps, housing in neighborhood, economic development, parks and recreation, public facilities and infrastructure, environment and natural resource, transportation and circulation, redevelopment strategies, capital improvements, a zoning plan to show how the master plan relates to the zoning districts, and community-wide goals and implementation plans. So these are a lot of elements. Your plan may not have all of these. It may have some of them, or it may even have more of these. But these are kind of traditional plan elements. And then there are emerging plan elements, ones that we're seeing more and more of. We talked about some of these. I won't go into them in detail, but these are areas that you may want to include within the community. And sustainability is big. And that's where we're looking at the economy, the environment, and the social community and how they all interact and how we can balance all of those components within our communities. Complete streets, we've talked about that. Looking at all the users, the automobiles, truck delivery vehicles, transit, pedestrians, bicyclists, how do they all work within the system? Which ones are going to get priority on which streets? Which streets are going to be the ones that are primarily moving traffic? Which ones are we going to allow for the pedestrian to feel like they're part of the street? A lot of streets, the pedestrians just feel like they're an afterthought. They've got a five-foot wide sidewalk and a hostile environment next to them of cars moving at 45 to 50 miles per hour. Is that how you envision that road going into the future? Are certain roads, do you want them to be designated so they're more pedestrian-oriented and less hostile to the pedestrian? And so that's how you can start to realize that within your plan by identifying those through the planning process. Transit-oriented development. There are opportunities to build upon transit hubs and look at areas, for example, within one-eighth of a mile where you have the two-and-a-half-minute walk from the transit hub or the quarter-mile radius, which is your five-minute walk, or your half-mile, which is your 10-minute walk. And you can start to develop plans that are built upon those transit centers and actually craft the density to be as close as possible to those transit hubs. And missing middle housing, which we'll talk about more in a minute, but these are, a lot of the housing unit types that were the heart and soul of the small-town America in the 1940s and 50s have kind of disappeared in terms of new development. And we're talking about things like quadplexes, fourplexes, bungalow courts, small multi-unit buildings. Everything seems to be carved into single-family detached and multiple-family apartment condos. That seems to be what we've evolved into mostly in the suburbs. And there's a lot that's in the middle there that's called the missing middle. And we're going to talk about that when we get into the housing section. But how important are those? Do you want to do something to try to expand some of those possibilities? Because these missing middle housing types actually increase, they can be more affordable because you can end up with some smaller units. But the appearance of these units, they don't appear as dense as your traditional apartments and they look more like single-family homes, a lot of them. And that's, there's an opportunity here to create some attainable housing that your aging population and your young population can thrive within if the development community will build it and your codes will allow it. All right, the zoning plan is a requirement. It's intended to highlight how your master plan relates to your zoning classifications and what type of implementation is necessary in order to make that happen. So you do need to make sure that your plan includes a zoning plan. Questions on the plan component? Yes, sir?
I was wondering what this zoning plan means of that. On census, I'm sure that, what is that overlap? I mean, you know, from, we completed our master plan, then we don't pay attention to the big details of, like setbacks and, you know, the height of the building, the body, residential, so how do we make sure that there are ways that come from areas to amend those things? So is there any overlap in the master plan and the course, only to be, you know, of any case?
Sure. And that's where your zoning plan can address that. So at a minimum, what you would do is you would identify your master plan categories, you know, the different residential levels, the different commercial. And then you would show how those align with your zoning districts and you're going to identify those. What you're likely going to do is find that there may be some missing zoning classifications because your master plan might envision some new type of district that isn't in your zoning ordinance yet. So that might be a blank. And then another thing you can do then with your zoning plan is talk about some of the things you did. You may set the framework for, okay, this new zoning district we need or this existing zoning district needs to be modified because we envision a different setback in the front yard for these homes, okay? We want to see this transition to something different. And then you could set the stage for the criteria that might go into the zoning amendment and include that in the plan. And particularly, if you're doing a form-based code, it's even more important in the plan to start to set the stage for what the form elements are of that district. So you talk about, you know, building form, proximity to the sidewalk, how's the pedestrian going to be treated? You can set a framework for that and describe it in your master plan, but then your zoning ordinance will get into much more detail. So, and you can also prioritize in the master plan. We want to tackle this zoning district first. We think this is the most important one and you can include that in your zoning plan.
So the question is, who could lead that and how, what is the mechanism? Is there going to be like a community director with a formal meetings after the master plan is passed? Or is it going to be city, also the discussion of that mechanic?
It's a little of both. From the master plan standpoint, you're going to set the framework for it. And that's a planning commission responsibility to establish the framework, working with your consultant and your staff. And then ultimately, when it comes to implementation, what I would suggest is, once you've gotten through the master plan process and it's in place, have a joint meeting between planning commission and city council and start to see if everybody can be on the same page in terms of implementation of the zoning changes. Say, we want to tackle this first, we want to tackle this second, and see if everybody can get on the same page. And then, as you move forward, then the city council won't be surprised that something's coming. They'll understand why you're doing it and why it's in the plan and why it's important. And if there's some concern, that can be expressed and you can work through those issues hopefully. And then you can hopefully move those through quickly through the approval process if they are implementing your plan.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on this?
This is more of a general question. What should we expect with the timeline, like, you know, after this meeting? How long is this, like, really robust process of, you know, going through all this, A and then having the zoning, the updates and everything? What does that look like? I'm curious.
Have you talked about timeline yet? I don't know. It's going to depend on the community. Have you guys thought about that at all?
We have, we've got, we've got a rough time line. We're somewhat dependent on the census release. You know, the goal was to keep the blueprints. So, you know, you can expect for a robust master plan process generally, you know, it takes, it started about a year and it'll be away from a year. I mean, depending on how involved you are and how comprehensive the process is.
And then the zoning changes, is that kind of, how did you follow it before when we did major updates? Is it already?
Well, in 2008, it was our first comprehensive master plan date in almost over four years. So that went up all over a year. It was very involved. And then in 2011, when we felt like the zoning was, that took over a year because that was our first comprehensive zoning, so you're right, it was over four years. So we did a lot of heavy lifting in 2008 and 2011. Those processes were very lengthy. This is more targeted, so it's not going to be as long as it was in 2008. But again, we're waiting on the census data. So we can only, we can only go so far with 11-year-old population either.
For sure. And, you know, for something like your 20-year-old population.
All right, any others? Okay. So now we're getting into the adoption. Now that you've gone through all the work of creating the plan, you go through the adoption process. So we mentioned this before, a planning commission typically adopts it. The legislative body can also exercise its authority to also adopt the plan. It goes through this distribution process. We've gone through this. I'm not going to talk about this more. So we're back here at our chart with the process that you saw before. So if you're doing a full update of your master plan, a comprehensive update, the review timeline, once you send it out for comments from the community, is 63 days. If you're just doing an amendment, it's a 42-day review period. So that add, when this was added to the statute, this, it's good to get the comments, but it also lengthened the master plan process. Because it used to be you'd go, you could just hold your public hearing, amend your master plan, and your master plan's done. Now you're adding at least two months. It's usually, it's more like two and a half to three months are added on. So a lot of master plans are done over a year timeframe, but then a lot of times you've got another two to three months for adoption by the time it's all done. It's really changed the way the timeline, the master plans. But, you know, it also provides an opportunity for comment. So, you know, it's, sometimes the process, you have to be patient with it, so. Some best practices for public hearing for adoption, trying to be as transparent as possible. Hopefully, you've given people that opportunity to comment before you crafted the plan and they're going to feel like you've listened. If you're successful, when you get to the end, you hopefully won't have a lot of controversy and you'll have a fairly successful public hearing and it'll be somewhat perfunctory. But other times, you do have people who are concerned about the recommendations and they may come out. You can try to do an open house towards the end of the process and share the plan ideas. So that might be another thing to think about. Do you want to, once the plan is drafted, hold a public forum, let people come out and you, as the planning commission, share your ideas and get comments there before you actually move into the final public hearing? That could be something to think about. But hopefully, you're reflecting some of that community input and you've got good, strong support when you get to the end. There's never a guarantee. And then implementing the plan. So to promote public interest in and understanding the master plan, the planning commission may publish and distribute copies of the master plan or of any report and employ other means of publicity and education. Planning commission shall consult with and advise public officials and agencies, public utility companies, civic, educational, professional, and other organizations and citizens concerning the promotion or implementation of the master plan. See, this doesn't sound like something you're going to stick on a shelf, right? This is something, this is an action book. This is something that guides you for the many years to implement. So consider that as you're creating it. How easy is this going to be to implement? And then there's capital improvements planning that's also part of the process. I wanted to show you in terms of implementation, kind of the structure of how sometimes this gets set up. You can have under your implementation, this is transportation. What do we want? We want an efficient and safe multimodal transportation network that offers mobility options to residents of all ages and abilities. And then we have some zoning action strategies and we have other action strategies. We say who the lead body is, what's going to, then you start filling in, what's going to be the timeframe? What's going to be the potential funding source? Who are the supporting partners? You can do something like this in your implementation section to start to really give the planning commission and the city an action plan that you refer back to so that you're really looking at this chart on a regular basis. You can develop it for each one of your goals. You can have goals, then objectives, then strategies, and these strategies then become a working plan, kind of a work plan. What are we going to be, what are we going to do? Well, we've got priorities. We've just set some priorities here, a timeframe of one to two years you might fill in for one of these. That's what we're going to work on first. Others may be five, 10s, or 20 years down the road. So you can make your plan implementable if you craft it where it's easy to go back to and work with. So with implementation, planning commission should promote plan implementation, shape the development, monitor and evaluate goals and objectives, recommend the zoning ordinance text and map amendments, and keep the priorities on the table and find ways to move forward. And then obviously reviewing your plan every five years. So I think we've covered most of that. Questions on what we've covered?
I have one more question.
Yes?
This is related to the size of the, versus the density. So I know that we're kind of making it smaller, but then we are giving proposals of higher density, which may impact school districts or some other neighborhoods that we have developed. So how do you normally address those needs and what should be the mechanism?
So I understand your question. When you say size, what are you referring to?
You're going for like a small apartment, right?
Okay.
Then we're not mainly in the density, like how many of them should be in our playgrounds. So my question is, if we, what should be the mechanism so that we know that schools are not like overcrowded, the other issues, the creation of density and the overcrowding? So what should be the mechanism?
Well, it depends, it depends on how that is envisioned. Like, for example, if it's a missing middle neighborhood that you're proposing, and we're going to talk about housing in a minute here, maybe I should wait to answer. I'll give you a brief answer and if we have to go into it more, I'll, we can do that because we're going to talk about it. But you may look to incorporate multiple types of housing that look like single-family, but some may have one family, some may have two, some may have four into a block. And so you could, for planning purposes, do a projection of how many people and how many children would be on average on a block like that and then use that in your forecasts to plan for different facilities. So that's typically how it's done. You try to make an estimate if you're allowing for a mix of types on a block, that this, on average, we're going to have this type of actual population and school population. And you can certainly do it that way.
Well, we forward it with the school district line though. How many units are being built? But let me tell you, it was nothing like during the 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s where there were a thousand units being built here where now we have 115, but.
Yeah.
My point was, is in the old days, it was a lot larger impact on the school district than it is today. Because today, like, we had the apartment bill over by MJR. Because of that, then they had to, they had to shift students and bust them a little bit further because one elementary school was called as an example. But they do, get the information from us and they plan for it.
Dr. Majewski always says, you build a whole microhouse.
Right. He always says that. School funding is my bias.
Yeah, they need to get more funding. I mean, the apartment gives them 200, I mean, that's like the next. Yeah. So. We talked, I think, the next question, what we're struggling with is people want the smaller units, but they don't want the density. They're wildly looking at people little smaller units. So I don't know how we address that or if we want to address that. That seems to be what the public is.
And it's a perfect segue into our housing section, okay? So let's talk about housing. We're going to talk about a number of things. We're going to talk about attainable housing. We're going to talk about federal and state housing laws and housing strategies. So I want to talk first about, since this is a training program from the Michigan Association of Planning, they, the group developed a housing policy back in 2016. So some of the things that come from that housing policy include, to thrive, communities need an adequate supply of housing close to employment, public transportation, public facilities like libraries, parks, and public schools. The housing stock must include affordable and accessible for sale and rental units, not only to meet social equity goals, but also to ensure community, economic, cultural, and demographic diversity. Communities must develop their housing stock without sacrificing sound regulations to protect the environment and the public health. And why? Because we want to allow our older residents to stay in the city. We want to attract younger residents. We want to attract families. We want to support local businesses, and we want to do that throughout the community. So when we are assessing our housing needs, some of the things we want to do is, we want to look at those employment centers and local businesses that need workforce housing nearby. How, you, some communities or some businesses will do surveys and they might share the information where the larger employers, where do their people live? What's the zip code of their, of their population? They might share that with you, some of them will, because it's generic information, and you'll get an indication of how far people are commuting. And then you could start to look at, well, okay, what would we be able to do here to build some more workforce housing that could have those folks live within the community and shorten their commuting distance? So you can review commuting patterns. There's a lot of good information available on commuting patterns now. You can get it right from SEMCOG, showing the inflows and the outflows. How many people are coming into your community every day to work? And how many people are leaving this community to work elsewhere? And what communities are they going to? How far are they traveling? A lot of that data is available and at your fingertips. So some of the questions are, is the local housing stock attainable, affordable, and accessible? Where will your young adult children live? Where will you go when you can or don't want to maintain the four thousand square foot house anymore? And are there both for sale and rental units? Because we're finding too, that with the, with the housing crisis and with the last shift with, when people couldn't sell their homes, some people are now looking to be more in rental units, and they want high-quality rental, even single-family detached rental units. So there's a whole range of, of, of housing types that we see as being both for sale and rental. And I, I think rental units get the greatest stigma. And what I see in the communities, people don't like rental housing units. It's, and, and there's a place for rental within every community, and people are looking for that type of option. I think the question is, what does it look like? And I think we're afraid, because typically, it's just been these, maybe it's unattractive apartment buildings we think of as being rental, but maybe rental becomes something different and something that, that when people visualize it, they visualize it differently than they have in the past, depending upon what's available in your community. So I think it's important to talk about cost. Because Urban Land Institute reports that small housing, that's under fourteen hundred square feet, historically represented sixteen percent of new construction, but now it's closer to seven percent. Within this, when combined with the next category, which is fourteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet, the overall distribution of small homes has declined from just under forty percent of all new construction to twenty-two percent. Homes over twenty-four hundred square feet have increased from thirty-two percent to fifty percent of new construction since nineteen ninety-nine, and then labor, materials, and permitting fee costs have all increased. So what this means is that we're building more and more unaffordable housing. Cost burden for housing should generally, as a rule of thumb, be, should not be thirty percent or more of your household income should be considered affordable. So if you're spending more than thirty percent of your household income, then you're going to be housing burdened. So housing costs for, when, there's a, there's a term that's now, I think, becoming more and more accepted within the community, that we want to try to build housing that's attainable. And there's no universal definition, but generally, it's considered to be eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income, okay? So if you take your area median income and you take that range of eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent, hopefully, you are providing housing that folks within that range can actually find within your community. So according to HUD, the Detroit Metro area median income was seventy-eight thousand five hundred in twenty twenty. So what does that mean? That means that the far end, which is the eighty percent of area median household, median household income, that's sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. That means you can afford fifteen hundred and seventy dollars per month in housing costs, which is the equivalent of about a two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar home. At the other end, a hundred and twenty percent, that's ninety-four thousand dollars, and you can afford twenty-three hundred and fifty-five dollars a month. That's the equivalent of about a three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar home. So what do we find when we look at new construction? In the Detroit Metro area, average cost of new construction in twenty nineteen, so it's obviously, that number's a lot higher now because the way we know how construction costs are going, three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand. And the upper end of that eighty to a hundred and twenty percent we just looked at, three-hundred-and-seventy thousand is considered to be affordable for those making a hundred and twenty percent. So we already know that the typical home in the Detroit Metro area is outside the range of what is attainable within that eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. So we have, we have a crisis. You know, there, if you look at the average price of a house that is, that blends together both existing homes and new construction, it's lower than this. But this is new construction. So if somebody wants to buy a new home, they're going to have a difficult time finding it if they're within that range. So we don't have a lot of housing stock that is attainable for folks who are, like we said, the younger folks, the folks that maybe are looking for something more affordable, and the workforce housing. The housing for folks that are, for a lot of people that are working within this community. So we're also witnessing a sh, yes?
Just ask your question.
Yeah, yeah.
So you measure the area median income from metro Detroit?
Correct, that's how HUD, that's how HUD measures it, right.
So it's always for like?
It's for a metro area, correct. And, and keep in mind that this, that that definition is different from just median income, because it's, that definition of area median income is different than just median income. Because for HUD's purposes, they look at it for families. So it's going to be higher than median income, because it's only going to be those folks that have children in their household. That's what that's based on, okay? So if you're, it's not going to include people that are single, that don't have children in that number. So it is higher than the median income. So it gives you an even higher price. If you were just focusing on just the median income, those numbers would even be lower and even, even a smaller price for a house, so. Just so you understand those numbers, yeah. And we're, we're seeing a shift in household demographics too. Thirty percent of households in the U.S. are single persons. By twenty twenty-five, seventy-five to eighty-five percent of households will not have children living in the household. By twenty thirty, twenty percent of Americans will be sixty-five and older, and one-third of baby boomers and two-thirds of millennials want to live in missing middle housing. That's a pretty significant shift. So we're seeing a change in what people are looking for. In addition to housing costs, we have transportation costs, which are also on the rise. It's typically the second highest household expense after housing. And when we start to look at these numbers, we actually have this Housing and Transportation Affordability Index by the Center for Neighborhood Technology, which you can go online and plug in different communities. So the recommended standard there is that your combination of housing and transportation is less than forty-five percent of your household income, okay? That's the, that's what's considered to be acceptable, so you're not burdened by those costs. So let's see what we have here. In Troy, sixty percent. So you've got housing and transportation as a percent of income in Troy is sixty percent. That's high. And thirty-seven percent of that is housing. For Detroit Metro, it's fifty-two percent, with twenty-nine percent of it being housing. So you can see most of that difference between the city of Troy and the Detroit Metro is the housing difference, not the transportation difference. So that's a lot of your family income going to just housing and transportation. And so whatever a community can do to make housing more affordable and shorten trip lengths and provide alternative forms of transportation that don't require you owning a car and maintaining a car, you can bring those numbers down and make everything more affordable. So it's real, I think it's really important to think of it as both a transportation and a housing challenge, okay? Because both of those costs are high, and they're impacting the ability of people to afford housing. So how should this data be used in the master plan process? What do you think? What would you do with this information? How might it influence what you're going to do in the master plan? Any ideas?
Phil, help me define goals. You know, what, how can we improve this? How does that, we have the maintenance and the, for what application options?
Okay, good. What else? What else will we do with this information? How would we use it?
Bringing the developer community, talking about this, your reaction from them, because you quite often see, as mentioned earlier, reducing the product, the public market. As a mission, we were trying to especially, before, which has really gotten me worried. So I think, providing the understanding of what economics or whatever it is that developers are seeing, that are deepening away from building kind of thought, we see these.
Good, I think that's a great idea. Yes?
This piece of information is very good. But if you could include, if you could include the appreciation, right? Like putting an investment for future, where I don't point that the house appreciation is not much. So that may motivate people to go for, you know, more, smaller houses and invest money somewhere else.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we, we always used to think of the, the home as being the big investment you're going to make in your life, right? And you're, you expected that the value's going to go up and you're going to have this appreciation. And a lot of people are finding it's not necessarily that type of investment, right? You need to be investing your money in true other investments if you want it to grow, and the house may not necessarily provide that return. Particularly, when you factor in the true cost of maintaining it over time and what you get out of it at the end when you sell it, it's not always the best investment. Right, yes.
Could you possibly conclude from this that Troy is more attractive than Detroit? People are willing to pay more to live in Troy? But it's not necessarily a bad thing?
You could, to some extent, you could, you could say people are willing to pay, like, for example, I always look at schools. I mean, people are willing to pay more to live where there are good schools. Okay? Because that's important. So yes, you could argue, and they may be willing to drive farther to work somewhere to live here as well. Yeah, it could be seen as a, as one factor that you would say is a success story, but at the same time, it's a challenge.
I find this interesting.
So, yeah, I, yeah, it's an interesting observation, though. Yes?
I just want to echo a comment, it's important, a great comment made. Because I think my takeaway from this is, yes, we need to see, you know, housing, we need to think about options that are not so large and expensive. But what we found is, is the market's not taking it. We had to just even amend our cluster zoning to make it larger, because the market wasn't taking. And, and when we were talking to some people, like, how to, to what extent do you just stick to your policy and push the market to, to adjust? Or you work with the market? So I think your comment, let's work with the market in a sense. Let's talk to developers and find, you know, what are, what are opportunities. So I really, really like that comment.
Yes?
What this makes me think is, how many of the people that are buying the unattainable houses in Troy may be living on the edge in order to purchase that, to be able to go to the Detroit school district or whatever, the motivation is to live here. How many people are hitching pennies in order to afford that large, more expensive home? And if we were offering an opportunity to buy a more affordable duplex or something of that nature? And so what I would, that makes me think is, should we be looking at how we can alter the master plan or zoning in order to allow the missing middle that you're talking about that would still fit within the character of single-family neighborhood? But perhaps offer something that's a little bit more key? That's, that's what it makes me think.
Yeah, and you, you become concerned if people are that stressed with their housing and transportation costs. If they lose their job, how vulnerable are they to losing everything? That's, that's, you know, it's, it's very, yeah. I, I think you, I think you were, do you, oh, I'm sorry, you're next, though.
So Troy's median income is, appears to be higher than Detroit actually.
Yes.
And housing stock that exists here is a higher-value home, and the developers are profiteering based upon what they want to build. What do you do when you find yourself in a situation where you've got the ability to have housing built, but you've got developers that want to build something that isn't attainable? And the community that really doesn't want to have a, a higher-density, lower-cost product mixed in with their higher-value homes?
It's an interesting question. I think one is, you have to decide as a community if that's something that's important and you want to provide for it. If that, you know, obviously, that's the decision. You know, some communities don't want to do it. They don't want to do it, and they don't encourage it, and it doesn't happen, okay? That's more of your status quo, you know? And that's, that's a decision you make with your planning, your master plan process. What do you really want to do? But if you decide that missing middle housing types are important, obviously, they're not going to go everywhere. They're going to go and, and you, you determine where those areas are, and you establish those areas. I think the fear that people have is the unknown. Because we don't have a lot of examples of newer missing middle types going in. We're starting to see some now in the, in the area, and in the Midwest in general. There's more examples of these units going in. And I think once people see them and realize how they really appear more like single-family units and they, and they, they work, I think there will be less fear of them. It's really, I, it's the fear of the unknown. And people fear density, but density is, you're throwing numbers out there, and a lot of people don't even understand what those numbers are. Because I can show you pictures of three different housing types, and people would never be able to guess the density of, of them, so.
This is parallel to that, and I agree with Evan, you said that the modern housing type, which you can see in this middle category, can really be nice. One of the problems that I have associated with the first part of the question is that the developer is not to build something that would fit that category of product, except for its price. They'll build, they'll build those smaller units, they'll build them in duplex or whatever, but they're going to think of houses that fit the price category, the remaining houses.
Well, and we're going to talk about that in a minute, some incentives. So let me, let me, if, when we get to that, if you still have a question, let me know. We're going to talk about some potential options for that.
I just have one more question.
Yes?
Any in this area that we can take a look at to see what those mixed housing areas, what do we, do we scale on?
There, there are some limited examples of them going up. I can, I will try to pull together some examples to show you. We've written several zoning districts that now allow it, and they're starting to come online in some locations. Then the amount that are actually in the ground, I'd have to check back and see where, where they stand. But yeah, we, there's cer, I'm going to show you a couple of examples in the, in the Midwest in a minute, okay? Yes?
You had mentioned that recommended affordability is forty-five percent of household income.
That's for, that's a combination of household, housing plus transportation, yes?
So now with COVID, with people working from home, the paradigm shift that we're starting to see with working from home and maybe transportation costs going down for household, do you anticipate that that recommended percentage is going to shift? Because transportation might be going, because the commute to the office is going from upstairs to downstairs.
It, it wouldn't change the percentage, because that's still a kind of a burden percentage. But what might happen is, you can afford more house because your transportation costs went down, but you still don't want to go beyond that forty-five percent, I think is the point of it. And quite frankly, with COVID, I'm still not a hundred percent convinced what the outcome is going to be. Because in the fall, a lot of people are going to be going back to the office, okay? It's starting to transition, we're seeing some of it. But after the summer's over, I know a lot of businesses are planning to bring, not, maybe not five days a week, but they're bringing their workforce back two to three days a week. I know our firm's doing that. We're right now in a voluntary, where you can be in the office if you want to be, but you don't have to. But after the summer's over, after Labor Day, we're going to be bringing people back probably three days a week, okay? And you'll still have flex on two days. And I think a lot of companies are going to do that. Well, that, you still have to have a car. You, maybe you're not driving five days a week, you're only driving three days, but that, the overall change in your burden for transportation is not substantially different, because the biggest cost is actually owning and insuring the car. and insuring the car. So, and if we're successful in ultimately eradicating COVID-19 over a certain period of time, which we don't really know what that is, and people stop thinking about it, we could end up just pulling right back and going back to the habits we had before, maybe not a hundred percent, there's always, I think there is going to be an increase in telecommuting type of, type of patterns, but we really don't know what that is until we know how we behave when we don't have an ongoing threat. So, those are, those are big questions.
Those are big questions that we're not going to know the answer to for a few years while we're doing the master planning.
You do, well, you have to do it now, right, and you have to, maybe you have some, some scenario planning where you say, well, if it goes this way, this is how we might react, if it goes this way, this is how we might react to.
I think some of the transportation costs has moved in technology costs.
Right.
So the kids and parents walking from home, I think that that transportation cost has moved for them through technology, getting broadband suburbs, more stable network connection.
Right.
It's all, it's a quick adaptation that we need to happen, that's the reason.
Yes.
I'm going to say this is tenderly, I can't, but why should we as a city be so concerned about affordability? We live in a really expensive county, Birmingham doesn't seem too worried about it, we're high in shopping, people are paying astronomical prices for our houses, because it's not like they're going to let, you can say, wait a minute, it's too expensive, I'm not going to move to Troy. What, I know some of the reasons from a social change standpoint, but from a city perspective and the master planning process where we already have ninety-plus percent of the city built out, we're not started fresh, you know, what's the, and we've got residents who, like frankly, they like that their house has gotten so valuable, and we put a comp that are less, bring them down, they're going to be concerned about that, we're going to hear about that, what's the, what's the good answer for us to approach that without making it just sound like we're trying to solve the world's problems by making it cheap?
Some things that come to my mind are, two things we talked, two of them are things we talked about before, which is having our adult children be able to come and buy a house here, so once you've gone to college and you have a job and you can afford maybe a hundred and seventy-five or a hundred and fifty or a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar home, whatever that number is, or, even if it's a two-hundred thousand dollar home, you probably aren't going to be able to find a lot of options for that here. So finding something that they could afford so they could come back and live here, or people who are retiring and now their income levels have dropped and they'd like to stay here, so those, we've talked about them. The other component to me is supporting some of the planning decisions you've already made, the Big Beaver Corridor, you've got some areas that you want to really be vibrant hubs, okay? In order for those areas to grow with the retail and the entertainment and all of those types of uses that are envisioned in that plan and in your master plan, you need to have people to support that, and the plan talked about that, the importance of increasing housing density close to the corridor. So if you can find pockets that are near areas that are already planned to be intense, we're not talking about your, your more low-density residential areas, we're talking about areas that are planned for more intensity, and then shoehorn in some infill development and redevelopment that has a little bit more density and has the ability for people to now engage in this walkable environment, you're now supporting planning efforts and investments that you've made over the years. So that's like the number one, I, like I said, this isn't about putting increased density all over the city, it's about targeting density in areas that will support the city and support decisions you've already made.
I just agree with that, I think the notice is about the issue with that, and Big Beaver District already allows for that, but like, because that city apartments are not cheap, I don't know if you go on their website, it's, it's impressive, right? People want to pay lots, especially in the place where they're developing, I'm just...
You could, you could, and I'm going to talk about this in a minute, but you could put in incentives for more attainable units, and there are communities that do that, that either require a certain percentage or will say, we'll give you this if you will, in fact, include a certain percentage as being within a price point, okay? I know that you can debate that separately, but I'm just saying there are options that you can potentially explore.
But are we hurting as a city bad enough to really want to do something like that? That's my question.
Well.
I know our tax will, we talked about it, we were in 2007, we were all this, I just wonder what, you know, I, I hear empty neighbors saying that, we'll shake a state in Troy unless it's small, we just approved this actual one housing, this, it may start at four hundred and fifty thousand or something, if it's small units that we want, but I talked to somebody yesterday at the corner park, he said, well, that's right, I paid that, I paid taxes on my house, it was worth paying two hundred thousand, I'm not going to develop my taxes just to have, you know, anything change, so I mean, I understand all that, I just don't know, actually, I guess I'm a little bit bothered by the fact that it seems like it's trying to already lock the station as we're sitting here in the middle of this middle state, moving and prices are so high, like, I feel like I would have to go back down and have it sort of be affected, because no one's going to build a hundred and fifty thousand dollar unit in Troy right now, if it does exist.
Well, and you may, if it's important to you, if you decide as a community, and that's, that's a policy decision for you to make through this planning process, if you feel that that's important, then you can start to explore things that, how, then, okay, how do we make it happen? And a lot of communities may have to put some skin in the game, they may have to help acquire the property and turn it over to someone who guarantees they're going to build it at a certain rate, or do an infrastructure improvement, targeting your road funds to improve a road that needs to be improved, that could service that development, you can do proactive things with your infrastructure costs and with your acquisition of land and other methods to help the affordability of housing if you as a community think it's important, but that's a policy decision for you to make.
Is that very managed?
No, 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 it's a good, no, it's, no, not at all, I appreciate it. All right.
That's the discussion that's out there.
Yes.
Just some people know.
Oh, yeah.
Well, to resume, you say, well, we're obligated to provide for all uses.
You are, you are.
So if there is a demand, like, let's just say, the classic one, especially more rural areas, is that demand for manufactured housing, and, you know, if there is a market for it, you have to provide, you just can't say no, so there's sort of a legal obligation.
And we're going to talk about that right now, perfect segue, selected housing laws. So we have the Federal Housing Act. Oh, you have one, okay.
Mayor, another thing that you mentioned earlier, workforce, I mean, to have workers live here will make businesses want to come here. That's coming here now, though, like, I, yeah, I know that's the way, I was before, I just wondered, like, my question was, is there data on how many jobs turned to work from home throughout COVID? Is there like enough data? I mean, a lot of that's.
It's, it's out there, I can't tell you off the top of my head what it is, but it's out there.
Maybe you can get that to the city.
Sure, yep. All right, let's go through these real quick. So the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, religion, national origin, sex, handicap, and family status. So zoning ordinances can't contain provisions that treat uses such as affordable housing, supportive housing, group homes for people and disabilities different than other similar uses. Ordinances are not, may not be enforced more strictly against those types of housing, and zoning and land use decisions may not be based upon a neighbor's fears that members of a protected class would occupy a dwelling. And I can tell you, there's litigation going on, I serve as an expert witness, and I'm helping to defend communities who are being challenged on fair housing suits, and it's a very interesting area, and it's evolving. And here's, the key here is that municipalities have to make reasonable accommodations related to housing for those that are considered handicapped and disabled. And so a lot of ordinances aren't necessarily built to address some of these issues, and when, you need to just make sure your ordinance has a, has a mechanism so that if somebody comes and says, I meet the definition of handicapped, or my group of people that are coming to live in this house meet that definition, that you can provide a reasonable accommodation for them. It doesn't mean every single one has to be approved as it's presented, and you can address community character issues and over-concentration issues, but there are important components of the Fair Housing Act that have to be followed. So that's, it's a big topic, it's not really, we're not going to get into that in detail, but I just, I think it's important that we discuss it. And you do have an exception, though, that if, for housing for older persons, you can kind of discriminate in favor of people that are older, I mean, that's, that's kind of built into the, into the, into the system. Now, the Michigans, this is what Mark was just referring to, the exclusionary zoning provisions and housing in the Zoning Enabling Act. Zoning ordinance or zoning decision shall not have the effect of totally prohibiting the establishment of a land use in the presence of a demonstrated need for that land use within either that local unit of government or the surrounding area within the state, unless a location within the local unit of government does not exist where the use may be appropriately located or the use is unlawful. And essentially what this means is you do need to provide for reasonable land uses, okay? And certainly, all types of housing stock are considered to be reasonable land uses, and if you, if someone can show that you are exactly excluding a particular type of housing, you could be challenged, and you may not be that successful if you're challenged, so it just depends on the case, but I'm not going to go into a whole lot of detail on that, but that's, that's exclusionary zoning. When there's a demonstrated need for a use, a location must exist where the use can be appropriately located, considering appropriate locations for housing. And really what this comes down to, and what I always tell communities, plan for a wide variety of housing types in your community, otherwise a judge may tell you where it's going to go, and it may end up going in a place where you don't want it to go. And that was, that was the old-school philosophy with mobile home parks, some people say, we don't want them, we're not going to plan for them anywhere, and then someone would come in and propose it in a location that was ridiculous, and the judge would say, well, you have exclusionary zoning, you get to put it there, and you're stuck with it. Now, if you had you planned for it, and planned for it in a location that made sense, it wouldn't have hurt so much, but now you're stuck with it in a place that you really don't like, so it's all about planning for all of these reasonable uses. So you want to check your ordinances and make sure you're providing for a wide range of housing types, including multiple-family manufactured housing. Inclusionary zoning is a concept that requires a specific number of affordable units either within market value projects or at specified off-site locations. This is something I talked about before, if you choose to be inclusionary in your zoning, you can require potentially that certain affordable or attainable units are included or that a certain percentage, or you can provide incentives for that to occur, so maybe it's not necessarily a flat-out requirement, but if people do provide affordable units, they might get something in return, the developer might get an increase in density or a reduction in green space that's required, or some other benefit to, that reduces the cost of building the project. So some examples, Lelandon Township offers a density bonus of twenty-five percent if ten percent to twenty percent of the development is affordable to a family earning less than the median income of Lelandon Township. Ann Arbor allows an increase in density if the project provides between ten to fifteen percent affordable units in the project. So there's things some communities have chosen to do to try to provide an incentive for more affordable or attainable units. So let's talk about some strategies, this is where we're actually going to look at some of the missing middle housing types as well. So we're encouraging infill, so providing for lots of a variety of size, so, you know, one of the questions that we are asking now is how viable are lots that are one acre, half acre in size in your community? Are people really building, do you, do you have areas planned for that? Are they really still viable? We're not seeing a lot of the larger lot subdivisions really going in in communities anymore, it seems like it's a, it's a little bit of a dying breed, the one, it's very expensive to build a one-acre lot subdivision in particular, or even a half-acre lot subdivision. And do you see, have you seen, I know you don't have that much developed land, are you seeing any larger lot projects coming in at all? I didn't think so.
It's a function of the fact that we're approaching building, we've got, we've got developers who are creating some, some new rear yards, if you will, and simple, large pieces, they can put in six or eight units.
Sure.
Developments, and if there's any, if there's a, 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 a,
As a matter of fact, if you try to build a fourplex project in a multiple-family district, which is where it would go in most communities, when you start to apply the standards, you would never be able to build it because it just doesn't work. It's meant for an apartment complex. And so that's why our ordinances don't typically work, and that's one reason why they don't get built, is it's illegal to build them. And the other question is getting the developers to want to build them, but our codes typically don't allow them. So, let's look at some of, some of these types. So they're considered to be medium-density, high-quality, marketable options for walkable urban living. They're missing because since the early 1940s, due to regulatory constraints and our auto-dependent pattern, and the incentives for single-family homeownership, including the housing incentives for financing and government sponsorship of, there was a lot of promotion for you to have your single-family detached home, and you could finance that in a way that made it very attractive. So we lost a lot of that type of development as new construction that was the missing middle. So, who, who might go there? You've got your seasoned residents who want to be able to age in place, your younger residents, the millennials who want to be able to afford to be in the area, you want to maintain property values because of common, and common maintenance, less, less individual property maintenance, and then providing flexible options to attract developers. You may have to do some things in, in your market to attract them, particularly if they're going to build them, that are, that are, so the units are more affordable. So, yes?
What's a bungalow? I'm interested in that.
I'm going to show you, I'm going to show you a bungalow court in a minute. Okay. So, walkable homes are set in a walkable context, they're medium-density, smaller, well-designed, smaller footprint, and blended densities. That's the idea here. We want to, if possible, mix these in with single-family detached units, so the density becomes blended, and it doesn't become overwhelming, if, if, if that works within the characteristic of where you're looking to plan them. They can be more fiscally responsible or beneficial because large, single-family homes do generate more public schoolchildren. Okay? So they do burden the system from that perspective in terms of a service provision, whereas these missing middle units tend to be smaller, and you don't seem to have as many children in them, but they're still paying taxes at a, at a very significant rate per acre. The per acre return is fairly high, so they can be more fiscally beneficial to the community and, and have less of a burden on the actual community services end and community infrastructure end. So we talked about this question before. So let's get into, we're going to, we're also including in this discussion accessory dwellings, because this is another one. These are all these types of things, the mother-in-law suites, the secondary suites, the backyard cottages, basement apartments, attic, laneway houses, casitas. Accessory dwelling units are also an opportunity for you to have a place, to have a second, smaller unit on a single-family lot. It's not appropriate necessarily everywhere within your community, but could there be places within the community or a certain district where it might make sense? They are typically much smaller, so it is considered accessory, so it's not going to be like a second full unit. It's going to be something smaller. It can be attached to the home, or it can be detached. Construction costs can be fairly low relatively, or they can be very nice and, and built to the full, with all the amenities. And the sites generally range somewhere in the neighborhood of 300 to 1,000 square feet. What do they look like? Well, here's some examples. To the left, you can see, you have this detached unit that's in the backyard, basically, of this home. You can see some of these other ones here are actually attached, they're built, they're basically built in within the home, so it's incorporated within the actual single-family unit itself. Sometimes they're over a garage, so the classic apartment over a garage. We can see some of these are prefabricated, but still pretty attractive, but more like a little tiny house that can go in the backyard. And you can see the interiors can be very handsomely appointed with lots of, lots of amenities. So on a per-square-foot basis, they're, they're not necessarily cheap, but because they're small in area. So people looking for this, some of them want just a more manageable, smaller, manageable home. We keep joking with our kids that one day, we want to be in a tiny house in their backyard, and they'll take, they'll just take care of us, and we'll stay there. So we try to find the right one that's willing to do that. So homeowners looking to add income. And a lot of times, these are structured so that in order to maintain stability in the neighborhood, the property owner has to live in one of the units. So they either have to live in the principal unit or in the accessory unit. So as you, if you raised your family in, in the larger home, and now you want to maybe not take care of it, but you still need some income to support your retirement, you could move to the accessory unit and then lease out the other unit and have an income stream. And then you're there still watching over the home to make sure it's being taken care of properly, and you now, as a senior, have an income stream to help you to afford to be able to maintain that home and to stay in the community. So these are a lot of potential benefits that can come from having accessory dwelling units if they're done in the right way. So, who likes these? Millennials, students, empty nesters, aging seniors, parents, grown children. So what a lot of communities have done now, these are allowed by right anywhere in California. Okay? Accessory dwelling units, they changed the state law, basically preempted local government, and you can build them anywhere. This, what Seattle did is they did, they have some amazing design guidelines. If you go online and look at their backyard cottages, design guidelines, they, they make sure that they're going to be really high-quality and really are sensitive for privacy and how they're sighted in the community or in, in the block. And they've got some standards. They do require the homeowner to live in one of the units, either the main home or the accessory dwelling units, for at least six months of the year. They have a maximum floor area of 800 square feet, and they, the guidelines are just spectacular. This is the example of the, "How can I increase privacy between my cottage, my home, and my neighbors?" And they provide guides on how to cite them and what to do in terms of placement of, of the vehicles, and what you can do with screening and other ways to kind of incorporate it so that it works. So that's one, one option, our accessory dwelling units. You just have to have standards that would allow them to happen. Okay? Sure.
I have a question. Do you use the state preempting in California? Do municipalities have a, do they're going to control the buffering element with them?
Absolutely.
So they still have that power?
Oh, oh, in California? Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know for sure what the buffering, no, that I don't know, offhand. Yeah. Here, yes, you do, but I don't know if that was preempted as well. That's a good question.
I just have a question for a minute. We don't, we don't allow this right now.
That's correct.
I know in Arizona and here and Colorado, it's very common. It's a, especially there's some of my family in the hood. They often mention that they have a moderated log project or a bungalow in the backyard, and that is becoming very common because some of the senior citizens have sold their homes, and they don't want to climb stairs. So they have barely one level, 800 square feet in the area. While the other side of the lot is the main home. That is something that's becoming common, as also is a four-car garage in those areas.
Right. Think, think about.
Same parts of the main house and one of the other.
Just think about the dynamic of your aging population and this housing type. And the baby boomers are the ones that are making their way through, and they're, you know, I'm one of them, and you, you find that there's going to be this increasing demand for certain types of housing that it really isn't in the market right now. And I, I'm dealing with my aging mother right now, and it's the same type of thing where there's limited options, you know, for people who, and she can't afford much. And if we had something like this that was available, that could change the game in terms of affordability. And also, it's good for the neighborhood too, because, you know, you, you keep the families together, and they're, they're all, and there, there's a lot of benefits that can happen. I think as long as, I think the key is having one of the, one of the units be the homeowner in one of the units. So you, because that's the big concern, is the stability people get concerned about, but at least that's one potential way to address it.
So one chapter of the master plan should be called, "Okay."
Okay. It, that's part of aging. You've got, those boomers are moving through, and you better do, because you're going to have to do something, or they're going to... That's funny, I like that. All right. So now we get to look at some of these units, and we had the bungalow, someone was asking, "What's a bungalow and what does it look like?" Okay? So here's our first example, are our bungalows, our cottage court bungalows. These are detached, single-family units. They front on a common green area. Garages are typically rear-facing or attached. They're typically one-story, but a lot of them have a second-floor bonus room, so you can do like a half a story where you would put a bedroom upstairs, and that's where your kids would stay when they come to visit you, but your master bedroom's on the ground floor because you don't want your knees are going, and, you know, you don't want to go up and downstairs, so. This is an example of one. This one is in Washington State. You can see, these are primarily single-family. They're one-story, they, some of them do have the bonus unit, but see, it's a, it's a fairly small green space, but it has a sidewalk flanking the green space. So the garages are in the rear, they come off a rear service drive, so to speak. From a construction perspective, you're building a roadway in the back that's not as expensive as a regular public road. It's more, because you're coming in and just servicing, it's more, more like an alley. It also tends to calm traffic because there's, it's not a wide-open expanse, and so it's, and the developer doesn't have to build the road in the front, they're basically just building the alley system. Okay? So you're knocking a lot of cost, infrastructure costs down by the design of this, and you can see the little site plan there. I've got another one here. This one is from Carmel, Indiana, and this is, this is, I like this, this is new construction. These are very successful. This is Inglewood Cottage Homes, and they're building more of them because they're doing very well in the market. And these have the bonus units, they have a little bit more, a little bit more two-story to some of these, but you can see they front on the green, they're very walkable, and they're detached, single-family units. So, yes, you are getting some more density here, but you are also getting a different style of housing that, than you find in the market. This is a plan we drew up for Farmington Hills, the Caustic Center in Farmington Hills. There's property right in front of it, and the city is looking to actually go out for proposals for developers to build this type of development, because the city of Farmington Hills has realized that there's an aging population, and there are not this type, there is not this type of, of development style available for people to leave their homes and still stay in, in Farmington Hills. So we developed this concept plan, you can see it has the common green area, the homes fronting, the garage access is from the rear, it's exactly what we just talked. That's the Caustic Center, which is the senior center for the city of Farmington Hills, so you would have a built-in clubhouse almost into this development. You could walk and then take advantage of all the senior activities right there. Yes, question?
Do you know what the price point is?
It, it hasn't gotten to the point where it, it's, we have that information yet, it's too early in the process. The goal has been, the goal in general, as the city has discussed it, has been somewhere in the 275 to 325 range is what they're hoping. So it's not affordable necessarily, but it's attainable to a lot of people who have a single-family home, who can sell that home and then use that equity to go right into this and then still stay in the community. So, because that's close to the price point for a lot of homes in the area, so yes, they, it would, it would work for a lot of, a lot of people who are seniors.
We used to do a project called Mallett and Troy that has bungalows, but they're all in your corner.
Yeah. Well, and it's going to be, the struggle is going to be getting it under that price point. Getting into 300s for anything is hard right now, but we'll see what happens. But that, that's your, that's the concept.
Is where are they at, to the units?
They are, they are roughly, the, the building footprint is 40 feet by 60 feet, so with the garage and everything, they can be as close to 2,400 square feet. Okay? But that includes the garage. Okay? So typically, they're like 1,400 to 1,600 square feet, and if you do the bonus, they go up a little bit.
How big is that parcel?
That parcel is, I think about 15 acres.
Are they affordable to do in an acre and a half, or two acres? I mean, that's, that's going to be, somebody doesn't want to come in necessarily.
Sure. Yeah, I think potentially, you, you could do small projects. Profitable?
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I think, I think the potential is yes, because of the efficiency and the, and the infrastructure costs, but I can't tell you that with 100% certainty that there's going to be an actual developer that wants to do that. I find the people that are building this are the small developers. There aren't a lot of them around anymore, but they're still the smaller developers who want to do interesting projects on a small scale, and they're the ones willing to take the risk on this. And then I think if they have some success stories, the larger ones hopefully will say, "Hey, wait a minute, maybe we can build it." That's what I'm hoping, because they're not going to do it on their own.
Quick comment, this, this would be a group, doable under our cluster, opening cluster.
Okay. All right. So that's one.
It's in the states.
Oh, yes.
And how do you see that other, other states, you see more development, like, in terms of Michigan, the development community, the market is just not?
They have not embraced, and I don't know, maybe we can't, maybe we shouldn't blame them, maybe we blame the municipalities because they haven't changed their codes to allow it. You can point fingers all over, but I, I, I just find that when we've had the discussions that we haven't seen the offering of these, and when, and in my personal experience, when I've tried to encourage a different type of, of development style that's more in line with what we see going on in other parts of the country, I've seen a pushback. And so I'm hoping that by everybody having increased communications, we can all move towards some changes that are positive for everyone.
Can you perhaps come to West, for instance, that's why it's on Indiana?
Yeah.
Is that a place where it's?
I think, I mean, I think at least you can point, you can start pointing to places that get snow and, you know, have a climate that's similar to what we have, and that's what people are looking for. If you point to California all the time, people are just going to go, "Okay, that's different." But I think it's helpful that we're starting to see some of these happen.
Carmel, Indiana, hundreds of acres of land to develop, and the mayor is all for it, and they spent, they voted, and hundreds of millions of dollars to create infrastructure for other divisions.
It's the roundabout capital of the country, too. Hundreds of, over 100 roundabouts and growing. That's...
From a perspective, remember the open civic side of that. Initially, when the very initial session, these kinds of things were, and members of the public liked that, we thought that one of the, was about, and it was when the plan started getting, some started popping in hotels and other things, and that, without any community input. But that, I just want to share that it's not as if our planning team and whatnot haven't had creative thoughts about this, but we lost a period of time when our community is involved in that kind of discussion on the new properties. Because again, there wasn't proper input and engagement upfront, even though I can remember a certain council person begging for it, and because that wasn't there, and other ideas came in, and that. We had aging folks in the community who loved the bungalow idea, loved elevation, infrastructure costs were far better, and it was after visits to places like Carmel that, that came out. But it's the importance of a plan not voluminous scope and not losing its original intent that would be key. And the thing about this here, I was thinking that connection to some of those bungalows and one house, that was on city property? Is this on city?
This is city property.
Oh, it is? Okay.
City will be selling the property as part of the deal.
I recognize that it is, they're not on that. They went to the bungalows, is my point. It was the rest of the plan that had over settled, and so, and I'm just making the point that there's, there's people in town who are interested in looking from the 4500s or 500s homes into these and staying here. And, you know, and we were working as a city to allow that, just for the density, because it could be the core of religion.
Sure.
So this gets small, that continues to slow.
And, you know, when Brett and I meet with developers, we, we raise this every single time, like, hey, thanks, or this offer, this offer, this offer. So we are continuing to press that on our end, and like Rod said, it's just a variety of excuses for why they can't do it here in Troy or in Michigan. But, but I think, Rod's point too is, if we see similar examples in like communities, I think we can use that as fodder to push up another here as well. So it's not because, you know, we are pushing in our end and trying to get more, like, we should do it as well, when they, when they need to come in, just re-put that on the board. So. Are businesses getting any pushback? I'm not very experienced.
I, I think it's been generally thought that this was going to happen. I mean, like I said, they haven't got, they haven't issued the RFP for the developers yet. It's, it's, so, so far, no, but it's still early in the process. I think people realize that these, these were old soccer fields that were, that were in front, and this used to be the, the recreation center. Now, the city of Farmington Hills just converted an old high school to the new recreation center, and so this became a senior center only. So the soccer field issue is, there's other places now, and it's not part of it, so, yeah, kind of a evolve, evolving site.
But that's, we wonder, is that these are just stressful on basically city-owned property, which is a different standardization, a different, when a city is, you know, we're on property, well, you know, of course, without the pipe.
But in this, in this case, the city is looking to sell the property at market price. So...
With limitations to this, that happened.
Right. Right.
Rod, there's some smaller examples with smaller, maybe a little, some of the inter-rain suburbs, one, one-offs from there.
Sure, sure, there are.
Similar housing types, but they're not full development.
Right. Agreed. All right. So let's look at another example, duplexes. Two-family, we're a little bit more familiar with these. The garages can be front-facing, rear-facing, or detached. This is a recent project in Novi. Basically, this is what the units look like. The, you've got high-quality building materials, you can argue whether or not you like the style or not, but that's, this is, this is something that is, is fairly current. This is a current project. These are being built in the market. This is probably the closest thing that we know that developers actually build that would be in the, in the realm of, of missing middle is, is two-family. But you have to be careful and make sure you have the standards that are in place, because otherwise, they look like this. I just came back, I'm working on a project in North Dakota, and this is, this is West Fargo, and the, this, there is a whole subdivision of the duplexes. There's literally not one inch of the livable space that faces the front yard. It's all two, this is the garage, you can see the house, so it's basically a house of, a, a neighborhood of garages with attached homes rather than the other way around. We call this the, the ultimate snout house. So, you know, this is what you get if you don't have standards that require something different. Now, here's a duplex that's even more attractive. Now, this really looks like a single-family home. You've got two separate entries, in this case, actually, they're both facing the street, but because of the style, it has an appearance that most people driving by would probably say, "That's a single-family home." All right, fourplexes. Here's some other examples, and these are starting to, to get a little bit more popular, but it's four units. There are some really horrible examples of fourplexes, which are basically sprawling single-family homes, all just connected to one another, that are found in suburban metro-Detroit communities. But there are also really good examples, and once again, if we make them so that they have the style where they look like house-built units, we can end up with units like this. So they really almost look more like a mansion home or a larger, single-family home, and the style is that you've got two units down, two units up, and one entry in the front, and usually another entry in the rear, so you can enter two of the units from the front, two of the units from the back, and you end up having something that really looks like a single-family home. This is another option where it looks more like a townhouse, but this is a fourplex. So you've got fourplex units, once again, facing a green, but having a little bit more of a, of a, the facade's broken up, it doesn't look monolithic, and it, it has an appearance that is, this doesn't look like an apartment complex, but it's kind of a hybrid. It's not quite a single-family home, but it, it's, it's in the middle. Detached units, okay? We're seeing detached condos, which can be built often through cluster ordinances. This is different from the bungalow courts because they're not facing on a green the same way. This is just a cul-de-sac coming in, and they're, they're facing the roadway, but it's a, it's a, it's a more of a compact development. So you end up with, with something that, to me, this is not as attractive as, as a bungalow court, because it's really just a traditional subdivision with smaller detached units. But this is also a very popular product in the market right now. The Michigan development community would build this all day long because it's attractive to empty nesters. You basically own from the paint in, everything outside the interior paint is owned by the condo association, so you have no exterior building maintenance, and you have no yard maintenance. It's all, you pay your fee, and all you take care of is inside the walls of your house and your unit. And it's a smaller unit, so it's low maintenance, and they will build these all day long. What I wish they were doing is building the bungalow courts all day long with the fronting on the green space, and they'd get the same yield, or maybe even a slightly higher yield depending on the community, and they'd have a much more attractive product. Courtyard... Courtyard multifamily, these can look a number of different ways, but this is where you have a little courtyard area and multiple family, um, units. This, this might, this one is a slightly larger, I think this is 12 units. They can be eight units maximum, you can control the size. This is obviously three stories, they can be two stories, depending on what you're trying to accomplish. This is a multiplex. Once again, this has the appearance of, looks like two single-family homes that might be attached in the middle, but really, uh, I think this one has six units, because it goes deeper, and you can enter various points, but the way it appears to someone driving by is, um, is, uh, is low density. It fit, you could have a single-family home next to this, and it wouldn't necessarily stand out, it all would kind of blend together. So, to conclude, why can't we do this? Well, most single-family residential dwellings are permitted in single-family districts, and typically apartments are in multiple, uh, multiple family, what we talked about before, and a lot of codes, these units we just talked about don't really fit, um, into one of those two districts. Um, and then there can still be that perceived concern about increased renters in the neighborhood, particularly for accessory dwellings. Some communities are starting with small pilot programs. We know some communities that are saying, we're gonna allow up to a certain number of units per year to be built with accessory units, for example. We're gonna allow, and we're gonna see how it goes. I know Traverse City, I think, did that. Uh, one of the communities we work with did it. Um, they're allowing for accessory dwelling units almost as a pilot program. And then if they see successes and the community accepts it, then they'll broaden it, and they'll allow more units. So that might be a way of putting your toe in the water, is to try it out and, um, develop some standards, and see if the standards work, and then amend those standards, um, as you, um, calibrate how well it works within your community.
Can I ask you, just in terms of pilot program, where, like, do you have to, council have to pass something, or do you make an ordinance?
It's been done in ordinance, yeah. What, what happened in the case I'm familiar with, and actually, both cases I'm familiar with, the zoning ordinance was amended to create standards for accessory dwelling units. And in the ordinance, it says, the community will limit the number of permits to 10 per year. And that's, that's what they decided to do, and it's, the council approved the ordinance, and it, a lot of these are fairly new, they're, they're fresh, and they're just trying them out, and they're gonna see how it goes, and then they'll go in and amend the ordinance and change that, but right now, it's based on a 10 per year maximum number of, of units to try it out.
And they've worked it out.
They'll amend the ordinance, and they may delete that provision, or if it's going well, they may up the cap or remove the cap. So it just...
How long have you had that? Can you strike out of it?
You know, I, I think it hasn't been, but I think we're starting to see more, um, communities willing to do it, just because I think they understand that maybe they need to make some change, but they don't wanna just open the floodgates. And so this is a way to, to ease some of the concerns of some of the residents and some of the council members, and let it happen at a small scale. So if it happens at a small scale and something goes wrong, you haven't allowed 200 units, and you can't, now you got a problem on your hands, you can try it out, and hopefully it works. So, um, I, I like the idea of, of doing small pilot programs, because I think then you get some acceptance that, yes, this can, in fact, work in our community, and it looks good, and we think it's okay.
I was hoping you might be, I was thinking, for instance, in your, that, showing, but you also said earlier, that, um, that shows that there's a way you can, like, use that as a plan.
Well, you wanna introduce the foundation, the master plan, so that's where you would say in your housing section, that we find that there's a need for missing middle housing units. Maybe you decide that there's certain ones that you prefer. We like this style, we think these missing middle housing styles fit best within our community, and we think that there should be a zoning ordinance amendment that would ultimately provide for these in appropriate locations, in accordance with, um, these guidelines. And I think it's, I think it's very helpful and important to try to tie your future zoning amendments to concepts that you've introduced in your master plan. And so when the, when you get the zoning ordinance and you have the public hearing, you tell the community, well, this is in our master plan, we talked about, and, and hopefully people participated in the master plan, and they came out and provided comments, and you can say, look, we had 200 people at this meeting, and we talked about this concept at one of our housing stations, that we wanna introduce more missing middle housing, and now we're actually adopting this ordinance, and we're following our plan. And you get, I think you get a lot more buy-in. Everybody may not be happy, but when you've tied it back to that, you have that link between the plan and the implementation, it makes, I think, life a lot easier. Any other questions on that? All right, so, should your master plan include or encourage missing middle housing in appropriate locations? What do you, you have any thoughts on that? Are you ready to say anything, or do you wanna, what, what, what's your initial discussion?
It already does, but I'd like it connected to clear goals, like, how many do you want, and by what kind of scale, and for what purpose, you know?
And where?
And, and where? Because I think that's kind of lost on, it's just like, a lot of people are confused when they read it, or read summaries of it, like, why do you want, because you gave plenty of good reasons, but maybe in the beginning, it's a full understanding, parents, you know, what that is, ever, obviously, the people who live there, so I'd like to see more, you know, wanting to get the progress, we want to have some more of this thing.
Well, I've heard of the problem, is that these areas, the economic zones, is that there is a transition, and they, I guess, what is the, what it comes down to is, what is the appropriate transition between, you know, the major intersection, the, and the office of retail?
Right.
What's between that and the single-family residential? That I think, well, I think, you know, talk, sort of like in sports, but we're trying to find that sweet spot, because it seems like what we've done so far is too intense for the community.
Sure.
I think you're saying, connecting to economic, well, the social goals, that relates to the bigger vision, I'm not sure. I know the master plan does have a vision statement about, like, what we want to look like, and, you know, this is the chance, you know, as a community, you know, what is that vision statement? What are the goals? How do you do that? And, and where are the stakeholders?
Yes, agreed, yes.
So we, after seeing that cluster ordinance two years ago, to help encourage that middle, missing middle housing, and we didn't quite get the results that we wanted, just recently we amended it to, uh, change the, the square footage as it relates to the mentally conscious. So there are things that we've done to encourage that, but we haven't yielded the results that we were hoping for. And maybe this gets more into the main, the zoning discussion later on in this session, but, you know, I, I think there have been attempts in the past, and I think there may be attempts, you know, in this aspect, to, to also do that, but it's how, that's the carrot, no one's coming to bite the carrot, though.
Right, I understand.
And that's the, the harder, um, discussion versus remaining on, or at least in my opinion.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a complicated issue, and it's, it gets back to, we don't have a lot of developers that are building a lot of the units that we're talking about here. So I think some of it may be a little bit of patience, waiting for some of these units to come online in the, in the area. And then I think maybe what, what a good example would be is to ultimately reach out to those developers that are building them somewhere else in, in, in Michigan, and have them come and look at your ordinance, and give you some input, and say, what do you think about these units going in here, the way our, your ordinance is structured? And see if they offer you some suggestions. And listen to that, and then maybe you can recruit them to come and actually start building in your community. That's another possibility. Sometimes when you really want something to happen, you have to go out and find the people that are gonna do it. And some communities get pretty aggressive, and they actually start contacting developers who successfully built projects, and say, hey, would you come do that here? And maybe that's what you'll have to do, if you believe in this, and you really want it, and you've seen a product somewhere else that you think is perfect for your community, if they've built it right here, then go out and say, hey, look, what's it gonna take for you guys to come and build it here? And you never know, they can always say no, but then again, they might say, well, I don't know, let's talk. And then something happens. So that, there's a lot of different approaches, and tweaking the ordinance, getting feedback, and continually going out there and, and looking for people, entities that are ready to take it on.
This is a point, there's a supply and demand, and we have to prove, or show to the developer, our community is set to this point, they want.
Exactly.
If you build it, it'll be purchased.
Right, right. Agreed.
So, I have one question related to that.
Yes.
How many future builders, and those are developers, you know, they're new mechanics, so that I know you mentioned this, but then, how do we really accomplish a company's future trajectory? Like, you mentioned that we can reach out to other communities, and see who are the builders, and...
Yeah, I, my, my personal goal would be that sometime within the next year or two, we'll, we'll be, as a community, be able to identify some success stories by some smaller developers, building these in, in the, in the metro area, southern Michigan, whatever. And we, some community will have a forum, and they'll be invited in, and they'll invite all their developers that are currently building in their community, and they'll let the developers share success stories, and have the others hear the success stories, and then have the community in the room, and everybody talks about it. And then I think...
Is there something like that, with, uh, invited builders, apart from the local builders?
I, I'm not aware. I mean, I've been in forums where local builders, I, I, we work, one of our clients is Lathour Village, and Lathour Village has a very, um, aggressive plan on Southfield Road for five-story buildings in an intense area, and they're not getting, and no one's biting on it, okay? So they brought in developers, successful developers from the metro area, and they asked them, why aren't you building here? And the number one response was that, particularly like for the commercial component, and some of the housing components, the market there was not strong enough to support the cost of development. You, you know, if you go up the road two miles, you're in Birmingham, and the price point they can get there supports the cost of that development. But when you come down two miles, all of a sudden, the price point is different, and they can't justify the construction, um, of what the city was looking for. The end result was, they said, that in order for them to do this, the city's gonna have to come to the table and somehow participate financially, whether it's infrastructure, providing the land at a lower cost, doing something to bring the total cost of development down. Otherwise, they'll never build it, because they don't see it as being a profitable venture.
So the density could be another, another factor, the city, you know, why is that?
Yeah, and the city already did, the city, the density is insane, but, I mean, it's five-story buildings, and there's virtually, there's minimal setbacks, it's zero front setback, zero side setback. I mean, it's, it, there's a lot of potential density, that's not enough. Um, it's, and once again, it's building something that would be new to that area, that's not proven in the market, and no one was really willing to take the risk to do it. Yes?
I have a question on that, that the city, the city, in that way, I see larger cities do that. Do, do suburban communities do that as well?
Some do, yeah. It's, I think you find it more in small towns, and they're, like, communities that have downtowns, where they're looking to facilitate some economic stimulus, but there's, there's suburban communities that, whether they're doing it indirectly or directly, they're making infrastructure choices that are benefiting private development. They do it all the time. When you decide to widen a road, you benefit the landowners that are adjacent to that property. So you're doing it, it's a question of how you're targeting it. And, um, I think you can be careful about how you target and actually help to make some of that happen, and obviously be within the realm of a public expenditure.
I was, I was telling, I know we're, like, getting, getting money, buying money.
Mm-hmm. Right, I mean, that...
I have a direct example of that, in the city of Troy. We planned for more intensive, like Big Beaver, and, um, the current large transition sewer line isn't big enough, so we're installing a dual line to go down.
There you go.
The water for you.
Okay.
You know, and it's just in our cap, it's in their sewer line, really.
Yeah, that's, that's a great example, because if you didn't do that, then the development couldn't happen, right? And so that's a, that's a perfect example of benefit, and that's gonna benefit those private property owners along there, and hopefully lead to more tax base, so the city ends up with a return, right? So it's a, it's a win-win, hopefully. All right, so we're almost done with this section, so let's get, then we're gonna, how close are we to, to, to break for lunch?
Twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, okay. All right, so, let's talk about some mixed-use density. So another way of density, um, in incorporating residential in a, in a non-traditional form is, is to allow it in a mixed-use setting. Uh, and a lot of that happened, in order for that to happen, sometimes you do have to have that incentive built in, and some communities, in Birmingham as an example, allows you to go an extra story if it's all residential on the top floor, and other communities are doing that. The other thing we're looking at is, what does it look like? And, uh, some communities are, wanna make sure that it doesn't look really dense from the street, so they require, if you're gonna go above two stories, you have to step back the third floor, or the fourth floor, so that as a pedestrian, it looks like a two-story walk, as you're walking, but it really has the density. And what it does is, it creates a nice little terrace area in front of the potential top-story residential, that can be an outdoor space, private, almost, you know, equivalent of a balcony, but more of a terrace area. And so, you can incorporate density in different ways, but you can also incorporate design elements to help it fit in, and to make areas not feel so dense. Uh, I know there's a, there's a pretty big push, uh, a lot of, a lot of ordinances in a lot of districts limit height to two stories, and going to three stories could really change the way those districts function, and improve the attractiveness of those districts. And there's trade-offs to how that happens, but you can develop design and zoning regulations that help to soften the blow and reduce the perceived density impact, if, if that's important to you. Um, the other thing that talks about is concentrating density on, in larger-scale development in specific areas that already have more intense development, so building upon that density that's already been established. Now we're gonna talk a little bit about single-family design with open space, and there's a lot of different ways that happens. Um, a, a lot of the conservation design was done as a way of trying to preserve agricultural development. Randall Arnt has been to Michigan many times, he was one of the proponents of conservation, um, planning and conservation subdivisions, where you take the parallel plan on the left, where the agricultural and open space area is essentially mostly wiped out, and instead, you require, in this case, 50 to 70 percent of the land area to be preserved, so that you preserve the open space or agricultural heritage, and you get a much more compact, uh, development. So this was done as a way primarily of preserving significant open space areas and agricultural areas. But we have applications that work more at the suburban scale, which generally are more focused at that 20 percent preserved minimum. Um, that's what we typically see is, is, is more of a goal when you get outside of agricultural resource areas. And, um, some examples include, um, cluster options, I know you have a cluster option, um, some of them have options and bonuses if you preserve more open space, and there's like a sliding scale, which I think you have something like that here, too. Uh, this is an example of one in Livingston County, uh, where you can see what it looks like from the, from the street. You've got substantial preserved tree line, and you can see the open space, D19s on the left, substantial preserved open space. Um, but these are, um, attached units of four, mostly four units attached within, so by allowing for that increased, um, internal density, the overall density still, um, is, is a lower density, but you've permanently preserved open space, substantial open space, and if you look at it from the roadway, uh, you really don't see it, because you have this natural buffer, uh, that's in place.
How come we don't have that, Brad? I'm not, you, but why is it, is it just the parcel that people do clusters? I mean, I think that's one of the biggest problems, is that everything gets built right on the streets, all the trees in the front get cut down, and nobody, I mean, if it looked like that, people wouldn't be complaining as much that you're cutting down all of our trees, right? They wouldn't see the, I mean, that's...
Well, right, yeah, I know, I know you love that, okay. But I, I just, I always wonder, I know a part of this, it's easier to build a construction when you're not, when it's closer, you're not, you know, you can't, and that's around that stuff, so...
Is this in context, my guess is this is Marion Township?
This is Marion Township, I believe, yeah, just south of Howell.
Yeah, so, um...
That is a big part, obviously.
A bigger parcel, less developed, we're, we're not the state stage we are at, in our, in our, during the city, so they have more, more to go with. Um, and it could have been at, that one of their goals was, was to look like this from the, from the...
Right, right.
It just seems like a lot of our preservation happens from the back of the development, it benefits the people who haven't been living there, but the rest of the community doesn't see it.
Exactly, the focus for us was the relationship with the neighbors.
Sure.
I, I guess that's the point.
There's a traffic, and that's something you have to decide, where, is it more important to have this? There's a traffic, and that's something you have to decide. Where, is it more important to have this view along the roadway or do you want a bigger buffer with the neighbors? So, huh? So that's something to explore. And there is a provision in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act that actually talks about that a qualified unit of government shall provide in its zoning ordinance that land zone for residential development may be developed at the option of the landowner with the same number of dwelling units on a smaller portion of the land specified in the zoning ordinance, but not more than fifty percent for a county or township and eighty percent for a city and village. So that's already in the statute that you have to provide for it. However, it is limited to density areas. So the land is zoned at a density equivalent to two or fewer dwelling units per acre or if served by a public sewer system, three or fewer dwelling units per acre. So that's about, almost a 12,000 square foot lot. So that, so it's, it's, it's made for the large, almost like the larger lot sizes within the community. But that is a requirement, I mean, you have that in your ordinance, but it, it's interesting that that's actually mandated to happen through state statute. All right, so what are the key issues with cluster and open space design? So what are the goals of the regulations? We just talked about where's the open space. That's one of the goals you, you would want to think about when you're developing these types of regulations. Where do we want the open space to be? What do we want to be preserved? Is making this form of development optional enough for your community? It's an interesting question. Some communities have grappled with the potential of making the cluster development the principal permitted use form and then having the traditional development, the special land use or the special approval. So that you have to go through hoops to build it the traditional way. Interesting idea. That could really change the way people look at property where they, they get the buffering automatically and they don't have to go, jump through hoops. They don't have to have a public hearing. They just get it. That could encourage it to happen. They, you, you would have the open space and it would be according to your ordinance and it would be easier to accomplish. And it would, and if they can get through the approval process faster, then they obviously save money. Is it linked to attainable housing options? Should it be? Are you trying to get some type of more affordable or attainable housing? What's the long-term maintenance implications? Who's maintaining the, the, the open space or are you assured that you've got those built into your regulations, which I'm sure you do? So the question here is, what's working and what needs work with cluster, single-family developments in your community?
It's such a, actually, on a point discussion, we just had, we came through and we did our customers. We did the 1900 square foot, and it was, so that, that's, that's the one point that's not working. So we have an evidence that we got a 1500 square foot, which is much more desirable. We got the 1900, but they're still, they're single-story, they're good for helping seniors, but not totally, they're good for homeless and homeless. So I'm hoping to how we can, that works, that goal will work. I think it's no problem to have a 1500 square foot.
Okay, any other thoughts? Yes?
One of the things we've also run into is, you know, the property size gets smaller, the house doesn't. And so that density, which apparently you want in the cluster option, becomes, it feels more dense than what it really is. We've actually had some situations where it's a two-story house, cluster development, you wanted to build a two-story depth. And they quit because of, you know, the setback requirement. And so we're working through some of those challenges now where the, the density has increased. Lot size has, has decreased. The houses have not proportionally increased. And we're running into those issues where we only had the cluster one, it's like a five or 1000 square foot.
No progress.
Yeah, so we have our growing piece, I'm trying to kind of, but-
It's natural.
Those are some of the things that we're trying to grab.
Okay, yes.
How, how many cost of development has it come from the city since the change in, you know, in 2002?
Probably ten.
You say ten?
Ten, approximately.
So you, that's more of a change, right?
Exactly.
The square footage change?
Square footage change, yes.
That's, that's, that's-
Well, I'm sorry, since we have the one from Washington, I think he asked the square footage change. Oh, with the square footage change, I'm sorry, that's what I said. Um, one, one of us-
One, right. So, yeah, we just need the, 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 the-
The ten hole, since the, in the last one here.
Yeah. So, so that I'm on the same page, because I might not understand what you were talking about earlier. The square footage change, when you made that change, the goal was for senior housing, to stimulate senior housing, right?
Yeah, smaller ones, the, probably the missing middle seniors.
Right, so, the other ten, they wanted to address the senior housing a little bit, or, or something?
I think only one, one or two of them did that.
So in your opinion, based upon the change that you made, and only having one impact as a result, is that a success or is that a failure?
Change is only made in the spring, so we-
I think, so you did it for the 19, that's like-
Yeah, the planning commission looked at it in 2009, I think it's a whole, we did-
And that's a solely goal of the cost gap.
No, that's, that's a great point.
There's things that have been successful.
What, what drove that? I, I'm trying to find out how, how successful we think that's been, goes forward, work even be done on. And maybe are you seeing more people looking at it, do you think it's working or are you just still waiting to address it?
I'm hopeful that, that dimension there for change is going to incentivize it more. So I, I think it's more of a wait and see in terms of whether it's going to be successful. But like Mr. Hatton started, what drove the, the cluster was, was not getting that strategy at the beginning. It was, it was tree, it was put on. So the cluster was the way that sort of open spaces, eight trees. And the missing mill was, was in response to the issue that we addressed in the master plan. We identified in 2008, the two thousand incentivized that to one of the, kind of killed two percent of the stone. Not only tree preservation, but also incentivizing the missing mill.
There is more we can do to incentivize what you want. Because now that we're going to help get more 19, which is good. But I think fifteen and less is really that sweet spot, but that would really benefit me and I know it's so hard. But what else, what, what have our communities done? What did farming can do to get that physical city property that they have?
Well, that was, they don't have it yet. They're working toward it, but that is the city's idea. They, they saw it as a need. Yeah, that's right, that's right. Well, I think, I think it will go, I think it's going to be very, I think this, that type of product is very, going to be very successful in the market. It's a detached product. It's, it's, I think, I just think it's going to go well. But you, I, things you can do, well, you can start to think about what type of incentives do you want to build in for people to build the smaller units? So maybe a certain percentage of the units within the cluster would be at the 1500 or 1400 square feet. And if you do that, you're going to get X, and you figure out what X is.
What is X? We do that, yeah.
We had that, oh, once, you know, those ten developments, I mean, there, there were density bonuses that were put in. So to address your question as far as whether or not it was addressing seniors, yeah, we were looking to do that. And, and that's where you got extra bonuses for the 1500. It was just increased because of the old, it was, was-
So could, could a small portion though still be required? Could, could, that's just another thing to think about. Could you take a, a certain percentage of your units and they would be at the 1500? And you would get something even beyond what they're getting now? I mean, that's another thing to think about. I mean, I, you have to figure out what works best for you. Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, we've actually found that with the cluster that there's so much bonuses incentive to be more units. Like developers can't physically put them in because it's off maintenance or my open space. And so, you know, you say, well, you get three times as many units if you do 1500. Well, they just can't, they can't physically put them in the space, it's just not there. Right, but honestly, where you see more than 1500 is in missing mill product, not, not the cluster. And those would be at certain locations, that's where you get the 1500 smaller.
Well, if, if you really want to get adventurous, then start to think about accessory units in your cluster. Yes?
Well, there's, I, I listened earlier to that, maybe it is, I'm sure you guys see, that's what I'm saying, I even know it's coming out. But fine, if there are some developers, maybe come to the size, even to the center, we should, have a, please have a conversation and, you know, figure out like what's, what, 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 what's all that? Like what, what, why are they not coming? I don't, I, you guys are the experts on that. Maybe you, you have your to, not out there.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm work in progress.
I don't know, or at least that I can find something that doesn't reach the cost and size and give you the price they charge. So we see the desire to demand out, but you, you're what lies-
I don't understand how that can be. Yeah, if we're, if we're talking about that one example I showed you with the cul-de-sac, with the small, single-family units, running on a cul-de-sac. And then you're going to build with the same number of units without that wider road, but with a narrower road behind it. And you're going to tell me that that's not feasible when the other one is. I, I have a hard time. I don't understand how that-
That's not my view.
Yeah, I'm just saying, well, I think they just don't want to build it because they haven't built it before. They, they've built it, they know what works, they know that what they can make money and, and they don't care to, they, they don't feel the, feel the need to gamble.
But are we talking about two different points? So are we talking about single-family cluster developments or a different style of building, single-family?
Well, a lot of times that different style gets developed in clusters, so there's an overlap. We're, we're talking a little bit of both.
I understand, so-
Yeah, 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 exactly. All right, we just have a couple more to get through here and then we'll be done with this section. So the next steps is understand your housing needs. Develop a housing chapter with specific goals, objectives and strategies. Amend your zoning ordinance to provide housing choices that are affordable, accessible and manageable regardless of age. And have open discussions with the community with benefits in mind, attracting, keeping residents who will be engaged in the community. And then understand concerns and apply zoning standards to mitigate those concerns. And then strive to include renters in community conversations where they live. Renters may be your neighbors, your children, your parents and even you. Now, you have a number of renters, you have a lot of multiple family here. Another group to maybe try to reach out to in the master plan process to hear what their concerns are, what they're looking for. Maybe, are they looking to transition into a different type of housing? What are they looking for? Those might be some good questions for you as well. So then the final question is, what type of community, for this segment, or what type of community issues do you hope to focus on in your master plan? Do you, are you, are there other areas that you, you see that might, maybe you haven't, we haven't talked about that you want to bring to the table? Yes?
See where it's almost, there are the notes, I mean, the notes and we're, I, I-
No, 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 no.
No, I mean, the note, notes-
The notes?
Our, our tension point with our residents and Castrol for us, planning, city council, planning department, working with developers and just really, it was the idea on paper, provision, objectives, whatnot, there's only terminology is there in practice is what happens. I think we're asking, why do we want to rebuild every five years? We're living in experience that needs to be passed. And that, that to me is, I, you know, I don't mean to speak for all the council members, fellow colleagues, but if there is something that we hear around our residents all the time is, they can't articulate, we can't see the planning. And I don't know exactly what it is all the time that isn't right, but our job is to try to pass that. So that's, that's the community issue, is your, I think.
Yeah, I get it. I think the Maryland, Thomas, or the past, I think neighbors, you know, the neighborhood nodes are focused on bringing outside people in rather than benefiting them, the residents that are on the queue. And I think that may be a key or a tension point. But when we have the big residential development, it seems to lose the meaning that it's supposed to benefit. Except on the level, you know, like a area that had, had everybody know that and try to clean the subway, a bunch of stuff that I can use. But a lot of them see that it's more of a representativeness on its own, you know, bad, but they feel like they're, they're channeled. So I think that's-
Yeah, and, and I think as part of the planning process, it's a great opportunity to revisit the development that's recently occurred. Because you had that concept in your master plan. You've seen some of it built out. So the question becomes, what can you do maybe differently so that it's better as it, as it evolves? Are there changes in standards? Maybe, maybe list out what are the things you don't like about the node development and what do you like about it? And start to go through that and determine, what could we, how could we change this so that we're getting closer to achieving the ultimate goal? Because clearly you thought it was a good idea. You put it in your master plan and there's certainly, if you don't allow certain types of development at intersections of major roadways, you're going to spend a lot of time dealing with developers trying to rezone property at those intersections anyway. So planning ahead for it has some value. But at the same time, as you go through a master plan process, it's a great time to reflect on what you've seen and what you like and what you don't like. And go through that and see if there's a way to make changes in the vision to reflect a better system that reflects what you're really, what you're, maybe what you were originally trying to get out of it or a refined version of what you were trying to get out of it that reflects the character that you were hoping to accomplish. And I think that will help. And then you'll obviously have some discussions. Maybe when you have public input, you show examples of recent node development. And then you say, okay, these are some other examples of how it could be done, how it's happened in other communities or other examples of similar type of, do you like this better? Is this working better? I mean, obviously it's a bigger question than we can answer here, but the process, I think, is just, it's, it's all about assessment and reevaluation of what you've done and taking a look at how you can do it better.
And it's also true that not only are the nodes the same, they are all, they have their own individual characteristics.
Sure.
So you have to keep that in the back of your mind too. And I know through the master plan survey that we just finished doing, there have been about six that haven't identified as to be something that we need to consider in terms of going, which we love to, I know Brendan, when you're talking about that. But that is something that they have in the works where they are actively considering talking to those major nodes. And maybe even involving those that have not actively participated in the advance of the survey that they sent out. I think, yeah, all my individuals, I'm not, to say, and they work at a lot of the same rate. But I think it's trying to do, bring the folks, maybe to change based on the, 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 the-
Martin, we can have a website, it's all, each node is different. Dave was talking about the lot in Square Lake and John Hart, that so far is working fine. There really hasn't been anything to go with it.
No.
And, and another example, just down the road, at Quinter, Square Lake, that seems to be working fine. And we haven't, I mean, they put in all these townhouses and I was waiting with my, with my teeth clench for the feedback. And I heard Richard Hatton, and I was, what am I doing, I'm sure. So, so apparently that sort of development works in some of our nodes, but not others. And so it's really, we have to think of, you know, node by node approach.
To add something to the character, which you like, in a mile or two, it's possible.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's- It's working as planned in that area, but other areas that would create massive tension that we don't want to have. And so, so I think that goes, I think what you were talking about much earlier in the presentation, which is that we have to, we have to look not just at a citywide thing, but we have to look individually. What's going to work in this neighborhood? What's going to work in this neighborhood? And our master plan should be more reflective of what, because even though we're all living in the same city, people have a much different situation in one area than the other.
So, yeah, what I'm hearing is you may want to look at calibrating the nodes to reflect the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. Kind of, kind of a little tweaking.
There's some of that, but you're going to be able to-
And then also, also, that may be recorded, we have a lot of tension to try and create, and Mark mentioned earlier, that transition between a very densely developed mixed-use corridor to what's essentially a medicaid, is a single-family detached, long, decades-long established neighborhood.
Right.
Trying to create that transition, what works there isn't going to necessarily work in other areas.
Right, I agree. All right, well, I think we successfully reached a breakpoint at the time we were supposed to reach it. We're pretty close, so- We're pretty close, so...
All right, let's come back.
All right, thank you. So we're off to, on our next topic, the most exciting post-lunch topic ever, which is zoning. I'm sure you'll all be riveted. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to try to get through this in a reasonable amount of time here. We have a lot to cover. So we're talking about the zoning ordinance, and as we briefly mentioned, our zoning ordinance is based upon a plan. So the zone, the master plan is long-range in its scope, and the zoning ordinance is immediate, it's regulating what's happening right now. Your master plan is providing you with guidance where your zoning ordinance is regulatory, it has the force of law, and the master plan is policy, and the zoning ordinance is actually enforced because it does have the force of law. So, key differences, and your zoning must be based upon a plan. That's what's going to help you, as I mentioned earlier, in terms of challenges. Your zoning regulations run with the land, and approvals do not change with ownership. So once you approve this idea of this great project, and somebody sells you on this project with their site plan approval, and you've got all the zoning in place, and then they sell it to somebody else, as long as they build it according to the site plan, then they can continue to do it. The approval runs with, with the, with the land, so it may not be the same operator. Those zoning decisions are permanent unless they're specifically temporary by their nature, being a temporary use or a mineral extraction use, something like that. An ordinance is, an ordinance may provide for expiration of approval if not acted upon. So if you get an approval for a certain type of, like, you could grant a special land use or a site plan approval, as long as your zoning ordinance says that if you don't commence construction within a certain period of time, that might expire. So what is zoning? Well, the simple answer is it's an ordinance adopted by local government that regulates the development of land, uses, activities, and structures. Typical content, it's going to vary from ordinance to ordinance, but you typically have definitions and general provisions in districts. You have district requirements, you have the review procedures, you have your ZBA and administration and enforcement. Like I said, this varies from community to community. Of course, you have your zoning map, and you have a purpose and intent by district. You have allowed uses, you're going to identify what's a special land use, what's a principal permitted use, and then you're going to have your development regulations. You also have specific provisions, the language of zoning, where you have measurements, definitions, and regulations. What's the setback? How is it measured? Where is it measured to? How do you measure minimum lot area and the like? And then we have definitions, and sometimes with definitions, we have illustrations. How do you measure building height? Building height does vary by type of structure. How do you measure a lot width across a cul-de-sac? How do you measure clear vision areas? How large are they? They all are going to change depending upon what the ordinance is. Interesting question, when you have double frontage lots or odd-shaped lots, corner lots, how do you determine a front yard? So, what do you think under A, where's the front yard?
On the street.
On the street, what about B?
Street.
And what about C?
Front side.
Yeah, well, it's interesting. You know, you would normally think that anything that abuts the street, but in some ordinances, waterfrontage is considered also a front yard. In fact, some ordinances make the water the front yard and the street the rear yard. So it, the answer is, it depends on what the ordinance says. Depending on what community you're in, this answer could change. So it's all in your, in your standards and how they're structured. So when's the best time to update a zoning ordinance? When we get sued and lose? When our attorney or planner tells us so. Whenever something comes up that we didn't think of, after the master plan is completed, once a year, all of the above. It depends, obviously. It certainly, any of these could make you want to consider a zoning ordinance amendment. You don't, obviously, the once a year is the one that probably is the least applicable because you may not have a reason to every once a year. But the other ones would give you some pause and make you want to explore whether or not it's a good idea, right? You'd want to discuss it. Whenever an attorney or a planner tells you to do something, you don't want to listen to what they say, right? At least consider it. So, off to, and we have different types of zoning depending upon what we're trying to accomplish. We are all familiar with zoning districts, but sometimes we have overlay districts that only apply to limited areas. So this shows you, you have an arterial road, and you have industrial zoning next to office zoning next to commercial, but there's an overlay district that basically goes a certain depth from the road and cuts through all of those zoning districts, and that corridor overlay district will also impact what happens in those underlying districts. So that's what's called an overlay zone. So that, that might make some sense in certain areas of your community where you're trying to accomplish things along a certain corridor. I know you all are probably somewhat familiar with form-based codes since you have form-based districts within your community. With, where we're typically, with conventional zoning, we have a lot of focus on the use of the land and less on the form. Where with form-based, with form-based codes, we tend to function more on the form, and we allow for more mixing of uses, and typically allow for a mixed-use scenario by right much more than we do necessarily in a conventional zoning scenario. Form-based codes tend to give us more predictable built results. They use the physical form rather than separation of use as the organizing principle. So instead of saying, all the residential's here, all the commercials here, all the industrials here, form-based code may allow limited amounts of all of those uses together, provided they are meeting the form regulations, and there may be restrictions based on which floor you are on. For example, a ground floor is more likely to be one where retail uses and entertainment and restaurant uses would be permitted, and residential uses in a district like this may be above the ground floor. So you may be regulating those uses vertically rather than horizontally. Form-based codes tend to have more graphics, fewer words. They can be adopted citywide or just in certain districts, and they can combine street and zoning, street design and zoning into one code. Like a master plan, a zoning ordinance is not really cast in stone in that you have to maintain it. We have new uses that come up, we have changes in our community that we want to consider. We may find that the existing zoning ordinance isn't very clear, and we want to clarify provisions. We may want to change and streamline procedures. You may decide you want to take site plan approval for certain projects and allow it maybe to be administrative or to go through a process faster. So you have changes. So, it's important, though, that you review the entire ordinance for possible unintended effects of an amendment. Sometimes you amend one section, and if you don't pay attention to the rest of the code, you'll find, oh, wait, we should have amended that, too, because it really impacts the others. So, doing an amendment isn't always as simple as it seems, just striking one line or adding one line. You could end up having to make multiple changes elsewhere within, within the code. So, when we're looking at rezoning or map amendments, some considerations. Obviously, number one is going to be the master plan, specifically the future land use plan and the policies and goals and objectives. The capability of the site to accommodate the allowed uses. If someone's coming to you and they're looking to rezone property, and you start to look at that district they're requesting, and the land doesn't make sense for those uses, then you may want to consider not granting that or granting something different than they're asking for. Compatibility of all allowed uses with the surrounding area and the reasonableness of existing zoning. One of the things that, when you're, when you're challenged on your zoning, it's important to determine whether you find that your current zoning is reasonable. If you feel that it's, that someone could actually come in, develop the site, and have a reasonable return on investment-backed expectations under current zoning, then you wouldn't necessarily change that zoning unless, one, the master plan tells you that there's a, there's a different vision and the timing is right to make that change, or if there's some overriding other condition that makes you want to consider a change. And that's where it can get more, much more complicated as to when you make those changes. But you're typically looking at that master plan as your fundamental principle for guiding decisions on changes to your zoning map. Deviations from the master plan are not recommended, but if made, should be explained. So if you're making a zoning decision that's not consistent with the master plan, why are you doing that? Is there some compelling reason? It may be okay if you can state the compelling reason and it's justified. I'm going to say it's probably going to be rare, but there could be instances where maybe when you look at the goals and objectives in the master plan, you find that even though it doesn't specifically align perfectly with the future land use map, there are some other elements within the plan that you're implementing that you couldn't have otherwise implemented. So that, that's kind of a nuance, and why every rezoning has to be looked at carefully to see how it relates to the master plan, because the master plan is more than just a map. It is a document, it has goals, objectives, and strategies, and some of those can be compelling when you're looking at rezoning considerations. Rezonings typically should not be done with site plan approvals as all uses must be considered, not just the one that's proposed. This is one you see a lot, that someone will come in asking for a rezoning to commercial, and they've already developed a site plan, and they say, this is what I'm going to build. I'm going to build this great, great shopping center. Well, if you grant, unless it's a conditional rezoning and they're required to build that site plan, if they get the rezoning, they can come in with any use that's allowed in the district, and they can come in with any site plan that meets your ordinance requirements. So, I try to get the site plan separated from the zoning consideration unless someone's actually offering a condition that they're going to build that site plan with the rezoning, or it's a PUD. So conditional rezoning, do you, you guys do conditional rezoning? Okay, so that's, that's an option for, that you, that statute allows for. So you can rezone for a certain use and development. It's a voluntary agreement. It can't be required as part of rezoning because it is the developer that has to offer the conditions per statute, okay? The, the community can't say, okay, we're going to approve you subject to these conditions. It doesn't work that way, the way the statute was crafted. The developer, property owner, is the one that offers conditions, and then the municipality determines whether they're going to accept those conditions and that rezoning. It's not intended to establish variances, though. For example, a good example that I've seen is, we've had, there's been a concern about a commercial rezoning. Someone wants the most intense commercial district, but what they really want to do, they only want to build one use, or, and they, maybe they want flexibility to include two uses or three uses. They're offering a condition that they're not going to build all of these uses that people don't want, you know, that could be allowed in the district. And then therefore, you're protected in that you know you're only going to get potentially a handful of uses. But you do want to be careful that you don't just tie it to one use sometimes, because if people say they're just going to build one use, what if that falls through? Then you have to go all the way through the process. It's better, I mean, it doesn't mean you don't necessarily do that, but it's, I like the idea of including it more than one use in a restriction of uses. But that's obviously up to the developer because you, as the municipality, can't control it. It's what they offer. Time periods can be part of the process to satisfy the conditions, or else the, the property will revert back to the previous zoning. So that, that's part of the statute, that there can be time provisions that they have to act in a certain way, and if they don't, if the project dies, then it just reverts back to the zoning that you had before. So some practices and procedures, try to avoid the single-use offers. Get advice from attorneys and planners on the application. Off-site improvements should be related to the rezoning, and standards should be included in a community zoning ordinance. Kind of guide you through that process. Spot zoning. This is something we don't want to see. Spot zoning is singling out a parcel of land for zoning different than the surrounding area. It's typically small in area, it provides a right to a use that's not provided to similar adjacent parcels, and it's not consistent with the master plan. Those are the types of checklists we're typically going through to see if something is a spot zone. If it's a special benefit to one property owner that's not offered to others, it's not consistent with the master plan, and it stands out as an isolated use that doesn't seem to have any relationship to other uses in the area, that's likely a spot zone. And typically, these are, and when they've been challenged in the past, they've been considered to be invalid. Nonconformities, sometimes we change our ordinances, and the ordinances evolve, and we end up with nonconformities. And the nonconformities can be uses, all right? And typically, we deal with things like expansion, substitution, classification, and intent to abandon. With nonconforming buildings, we're looking at enlargements and extensions or rebuildings. What happens if a building burns down? What are your rules and regulations for that? Can they rebuild if it's a nonconforming structure? It depends on what your ordinance says. Some ordinances say no, once it burns down past a certain percentage of the replacement value, boom, you have to meet the ordinance. Others say you can build on the exact same foundation as the original structure. You can't build something different. It just depends upon how your code is structured. And then we have nonconforming lots and nonconforming sites. So a lot can be nonconforming in terms of its dimension, for example. Keeping in mind, though, many ordinances require you to look at lots and common ownership. So if I own two single-family lots and they don't meet the minimum lot width, and I own them and they're abutting, most ordinances will tell you, you have to treat those as one and combine them, and then it can be, particularly if that then makes it a kind of a conforming lot. And then nonconforming sites, those are, those are kind of interesting. A lot of ordinances don't really address those with a lot of clarity. That's where your landscaping or your parking isn't in conformance with the ordinance. Your use may be, your structure may be, but there's provisions of the site that aren't in conformance. And it's helpful to think about putting some provisions in your ordinance to deal with. How are you going to address someone coming in who wants to modify a site, and their landscaping's not up to code? Do you require 100% conformance? What if it's just a minor little 100-square-foot addition on a building? Do you require them to bring the entire site's landscaping into conformance if it's way out of conformance? Or do you require a proportional change in the landscaping that's proportioned to the change in the impact in the building and the modification of the building? It gets kind of interesting, and I think a lot of ordinances don't necessarily address that, but I think it's a, it's a subject that can be studied in more detail. Any questions on what I've covered? Okay, I'm going to keep on roaring through here. Development reviews and other duties. Okay, we have a capital improvements plan, which sometimes is done at administrative level, planning commission, some planning commissions are involved with, with the capital improvements planning process. That's where you're looking at expenditures of, 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 of large public expenditures for, for infrastructure and for other capital needs within a community. Zoning approvals, this is where we're looking at what uses our constructions, our construction activities require a review. Okay, so you need to define that in your ordinance. Because really, if you look at the state statute, the only thing that's required by state statute to have a site plan is a plan unit development and a special land use, okay? Other than that, site plans are not required unless your ordinance requires site plans. So when you are requiring a site plan, you're going to specify in your ordinance what's going to be in the site plan, what's the content, and which, which activities require the site plan. And then who's the approving body or the official? So it needs to be specifically written into your ordinance. Standards for decisions, you should have standards for site plans, for special land uses, for plan unit development. What are the standards you're going to follow when you're acting on an application? Are, are all the ordinance requirements met? If the standards and the requirements are met, and it's a site plan, it must be approved, okay? A site plan for a principal permitted use, if they show that they meet all your ordinance requirements and you still can't stand the project, you have to approve it because it's a by-right use. If it's a special land use, that's different. You have discretionary decision-making, okay? That's, that's where you have to determine if that use fits within the district at that specific location. In the event that you do choose to deny a project, for approval, it's usually pretty simple. It meets the ordinance requirements, we're going to approve it. If you're denying it, it's important to include on the record the reasons why you're denying it. And it's very helpful to cite a very specific provision in your ordinance, if you can, to say, we're denying it because it doesn't meet section blank, 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 and section blank, blank, blank of our ordinance, and therefore, when you're challenged and the judge is asking you why you denied this project, you can say, well, here's what the ordinance says, here's their plan, they didn't meet it, we denied it. And it makes it easier for your city attorney to help you.
Generally, we don't send things to the planning commissioner unless it's all the standards. I mean, but I know in more rural, less sophisticated areas, plans will build that involve things that, you know, condition to approve, like land, and repackaging, or north scale, or...
Right.
So they're given, it's already determined by the right-hand staff that it means all the...
That's good. Not all communities do that. So, that's, that's a, that's a good practice. I, I think plans need to be complete when they come to the planning commission, that's nice.
A question on the third board, with the standards, the standards, now we've also, we do things on design standards, adability, things that are most...
It could. You could have some standards that require discretionary decision-making that are associated with a... You could have some standards that require discretionary decision-making that are associated with a site plan. So you could have those and you, you would have to demonstrate that. So yes, that would, that's where it gets a little, sometimes gets a little fuzzy and debatable. You're right.
And I think also that this, you know, you guys are really good in articulating the reasons why you are taking a certain action. And I wanna just reiterate that that is so helpful, especially for those things like, you know, that, that are a little bit subjective. And, and we're gonna find out because we've got a lawsuit, so we'll find out. That will, that will withstand the scrutiny that's required.
So, the site plan is a legally binding, professionally prepared, detailed graphic and written document showing how a site will be developed. If it conforms with the ordinance, you must approve it, we just talked about that. And it then becomes the basis for enforcement. So, site plan review, when is it needed? It's always needed for special land uses, for PUDs, and then obviously for site condos and subdivisions. You have to have a plan or record or a plat in the case of a subdivision. It's usually not needed for single-family and two-family dwellings on individual lots. Because usually you approve a subdivision or a site condo and then those individual homes or duplexes go on those lots and those just go through a building department review, administrative review. Often, it's required for non-residential development and multiple-family development. But once again, only if your ordinance says you have to. Who reviews site plans? And, and I'll just tell you an interesting story. I, I did a lot of consulting work for the city of Detroit about 15 years ago. And at that time, site plan review was not required in the city of Detroit unless you were building, unless it was a special land use or it was building on city-owned property or there was some governmental ownership of the property. It's very interesting, and now it is required. But places you think would have site plan review don't always have them. So, that, that has changed over time. Because they, we, we were doing site plan review training and we, we actually helped develop their development review manual. And it's kind of interesting when you start to look at the development review process and so that has changed, though. So who reviews site plans? Well, it depends on what your ordinance says and what the, what type of project it is. Typically, the planning commission is involved, it can be the administrative staff. That's the other thing, when I was working with the city of Detroit too, they, their special land uses were all, the public hearing was held by an administrative official, a planner did the public hearing and the special land uses were approved by the planner. They did not go to the planning commission unless they reached a certain threshold. So, special land uses can be done administratively. And then the legislative body, so when you have a rezoning or if, if the PUD requires that action at the, at the city council, particularly if there's a rezoning, it has, has to go to the city council. All of those types of approvals would, would have to go to the administrative or to the legislative body if they're, if they're specified. But it all comes down to what your ordinance says. Your ordinance is gonna help to, and it's gonna actually define that approval process for all these different types of projects. So when we are looking at site plans, we have review standards. So we're looking at the building, the building, and building arrangements, zoning requirements, parking, natural features, lighting, signs. All of those things we're typically looking at after approval. Really, the changes, it really changes only with the mutual consent of the, of the community and the applicant. So once you have an approved site plan, that's what they have to build. And if they wanna do something different, they need to come back in and amend the site plan. And once again, if they don't commence construction within a certain period of time, do you have a one-year or two-year expiration on your site plans? Three years, okay. So you have three years to commence construction and if you don't, then the site plan's expired, you have to come back in. And sometimes you can get an extension, sometimes you have to resubmit, depending on what the ordinance says. And then review standards. You have data submission requirements, so there's standards of what information has to be on the plan. There's non-discretionary standards such as size of parking spaces and required setbacks. So your parking space is either nine by 20 or it's not, right? That's a non-discretionary standard. And some standards that we just talked about are discretionary. So, preserve native landscaping, the site encourages pedestrian activity. Those are ones that are, require some kind of discretion to determine. You wanna try to avoid as many of those as possible. It's better to say, you know, put in a five-foot sidewalk. That, there's your pedestrian connection or have benches at certain locations. Have hard and fast standards because then you don't have that problem of having to get into the discretionary determination of what that really means, encouraging pedestrian activity. I like the idea, you get consistency by saying you're gonna put this type of pedestrian improvement in if this is your location and this is your site and this is your use. And that way, everybody knows that everyone's gonna do it exactly the same way and you've got consistency. And people going to these different developments can appreciate the consistency of one to the other. So that's just my personal thought on that. The site plan review process, many communities start with a pre-application conference, which is a great way to get the, the communication started. Then the applicant files their application, the plan gets distributed, gets reviewed. It might go through a second review, a lot of times it takes the second time around to get it right. And then finally, you go for action. You either have an approval, an approval with conditions, or denial. The other thing would be postponing. So, and once, with a site plan, once you're denied, if you have a problem with the process, the ordinance may allow you to go to the ZBA where you can seek, seek some type of relief. You can either appeal the decision or appeal a, a specific provision of the ordinance in the form of a variance. Or, you're gonna end up in circuit court or, or another court to try to challenge the decision of the municipality. So, special land uses, okay, these, as we mentioned, are uses that may be permitted in the district. They're not absolutely guaranteed that every one of them is gonna be able to go on every parcel. So they're uses that are otherwise compatible in the district but only in certain locations and requiring additional review. So typically, we see uses like drive-through uses, vehicle sales, vehicle fueling stations. Quite often, those are special land uses in many districts because they're more intense. They tend to get a lot more public scrutiny and they can generate more noise, more traffic, and more public concern. So the special land use process requires a notice of everyone within 300 feet in addition to a public hearing and so there's an opportunity for neighbors to be heard. The process is dictated by the local ordinance, it does vary from community to community. Sometimes the, like I said, there can be an administrative official that holds the hearing, it can be the, most often it's the planning commission. And then sometimes they can actually go to the city council or the governing body. Once again, depends on what your ordinance says. So what is the review process for special land uses here? What, who, is it always planning commission or do you have? Okay, planning commission is the one, okay, good.
Except for C of district. Or instead of land, approved by council.
I'm gonna change that.
Oh.
Okay.
We used to be more than once.
Mm-hmm. Sure. Alright. Plan unit development, okay, so this is an opportunity for someone to ask for flexibility in a project, either with dimensional requirements or other requirements or the types of uses, the mix of uses, density. And the flexibility is, is, is applied for through your process, requires a public hearing, sometimes requires a rezoning. And sometimes it's a rezoning to a PUD classification or it's just you use the underlying zoning and you're getting a PUD approval. Do you, is yours zoning-based?
Res zoning.
Res zoning, okay. The advantage is, is you end up getting ultimately a PUD plan that's approved along with a PUD agreement, which is a contract between the municipality and the developer that they're going to do certain things. And that, that's a nice enforcement tool to have when you have a physical contract that says, "You're gonna build this, you're gonna do this. If there's an off-site improvement they're proposing, it's in there, I'm gonna, I'm gonna widen this roadway, I'm gonna build this off-site sidewalk, I'm gonna do all these things." And it's spelled out and it's much easier to deal with if there's an enforcement issue because you've got that contract. So it's another layer of, of, of approval that helps municipalities in making sure everyone's clear what's being approved. Any questions on what I've covered? Yes?
So the PUD, that's, that's kind of, do you mean, can someone give an example of what, what do you want as kind of a point?
The CASW PUD located in the southeast corner of South Boulevard and Rashid Road. It's a multi, mixed use, it's got commercial, we have Starbucks, Uber Eats. And then in the back, there's attached condominiums, we're setting a room. And then behind that is 14 single-family cashhomes. That was reviewed and approved as one, as one comprehensive unit that is integrated, so walking trails and they share retention and things like that. That's an example.
And just south of there, PUD one, which is Woodside Bible Church and the Robertson Brothers condos, that was the first PUD. So, they, on that piece of property, they, that Woodside owned, they sold out to North Park, which then was a condo and then their place to work.
Sash in the way, sash in the way between Alpine and New York. That's a, that's a PUD.
Across the street, this is a living facility with a dog park. It was a partnership where there was all fun play on the property, they did, they do some cutting and filling, so they did it on our property. They gave us $50,000 cash, they helped us, the dog park.
They wired it to the proper house.
They used it to develop the dog park and they built a park for sleep facility, let me share that with the park for visitors, the dog park. So it was a partnership, innovative way to creatively provide some flexibility under the law. To do something that is zoning-wise, just without that tool, wouldn't be able to do. They're cool.
What about the one that is at Target and you have those townhouses? We did not have the ordinance in place at that point in time. The ordinance came into place after the midtown.
So that was the same job, right?
Yeah. More like, different tool.
Yeah. Not one you wanna write into your ordinance.
I have a question, what about the, one they can, one of those on the online course, where the Valco came in with, that was gonna be a PUD. So I'm kind of confused on that process because he came before the planning commission, but he was, he was looking to have a zone PUD, but wasn't putting forth a development with a development agreement like this, we're talking about here. So, how, how does that work out with you this?
So that was a, that was a preliminary meeting, just to kind of show the concept to the planning commission to give feedback, which, which happened. And then we're presently reviewing a draft, they took feedback from the, the planning commission and other residents, they modified it. We've reviewed it and gave them feedback on the, the concept as well as the initial rezoning agreement with best of concerns. And they're working on it and we, they're looking at it over here soon. So we'll be seeing that, the planning commission should be seeing that within the next six, eight weeks.
Also.
It's, it's moving forward.
Right, that's a big deal, it's the biggest undeveloped piece of property in the city, so I think 17 acres?
20.
It's all, it's all kind of struggling.
Yeah.
So what we see, we, the planning commission and council will see that soon.
So, that, that probably really isn't the normal process for a PUD in the sense of coming, coming four, two times. It would typically come just once with a plan from the planning commission or anything, this is just unique enough to do preliminary, everybody's okay.
We see, we, we really encourage that first plan of the apple to, to make sure that it, it, it gives everyone kind of heads up that it's coming. And it, and it provides feedback to the developer, make sure, letting her know whether they're on the right track. You know, are they missing something and is this, is this something that's, that we have an appetite for? Are there other modifications or something we're missing, that kind of feedback, which they receive from the planning commission at that PUD.
Okay, so the last question on that one is that, and again, there's the understanding that they presented to us that this is what they were looking to do. Generally speaking, they wanted to allow and solve this idea in the public, in theory, I guess they have three years to do that. Is that kind of out of the ordinary in the sense that typically the developer knows exactly what he's gonna build because he doesn't wanna have to change it and come back? And in this instance, it's very similar.
Yeah, so that's a good question. So, we had, when, when I first started the city in 2002, we had a brand new PUD ordinance in Arizona, PUD provisions. And they're very cumbersome because what they, what they forced the applicant to do before they ultimately got approved for the PUD is, is invest a significant amount of money prior to, prior to getting approved by the city council. They had to do, they had to do engineering, they had to build buildings and just significantly invest hundreds of thousands of dollars investment. So we had the, the Kmart headquarters property and we had, it was recently purchased by a large, a larger firm from the east coast. And they hired a consultant who had done a lot of PUDs across the country. So this Hunter Richard said, and Hunter said, "Your PUD, your PUD ordinance is cumbersome, it's, it's, it's discouraging creative because there's so much risk involved, so much money that's getting held up front." So what he proposed was the process that we're talking about now where it's, it's a multi-step process. First is, you get approved for a concept, so you get a rezoned PUD, the general concept approved in the PUD agreement, which is a PUD. That gets approved, now they, now they've, they've got those approvals, they've got those entitlements. Now they can take that concept and start marketing it, marketing it out front. But what, they're recognizing that large properties like that can take years, and, and, and three years is only for site plan, for PUDs is more time. So what they want is, is market flexibility because ultimately the market's gonna determine what's gonna be done with these massive properties. So they wanna be able to go to the market and say, "This could be an office, maybe it could be a forest or it could be a tent store, or maybe it won't even be an office, maybe it'll be something else." And it's all identified conceptually in the concept line, but it's delivered parcel by parcel through the cycle lines. Which, which, when it needs to be in a site plan, the first thing we just look at is it consistent with the concept. So it's, it, we haven't done many of, of these large scale developments just simply because we run a lot of large properties. Most, in most instances like across the street, they knew exactly what they wanted. They wanna persist in living facility, dog park, and it's gonna look exactly like that. They haven't wanted, they didn't want the full system. This guy thinks. Long with an answer.
Alright, let's move on to land divisions, okay? That's really exciting. Alright, so.
Since it was done since 2004.
Right, right. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this, but it, this is a, you basically can parcel off land from parent parcels. There's a one to four ratio at the state level unless it's otherwise noted at the local level. Zoning compliance, buildable lots, really done more in rural areas, but sometimes happens. The subdivisions versus site condo, another thing we don't see anything of anymore, subdivisions. The subdivision plat act is cumbersome. And I would really like to see that changed and streamlined so that people could actually do plats again. Because there's really no reason why we shouldn't be able to have plats. The only reason we don't is because you can build a site condominium and get it approved faster, but it looks exactly the same effectively, it's just depending on how the condominium is structured. Sometimes the building area is the entire, an entire lot equivalent. Sometimes the, the condominium unit, which is the building area, then you have a limited common area, which doesn't happen much anymore. There was the limited common area, which was your own yard, so to speak. We don't see as much of that, it's usually a building unit and then it's a general common area. It's just, it's gotten very interesting the way all this has happened. But quite frankly, you won't be able to tell the difference. And the most important lesson to learn is a condominium is a form of ownership and not a type of development. When condominiums first started, everybody thought of them as multiple family. "I'm gonna go live in a condo in Miami Beach," right? You know, condo, condo, condo. It's just the form of ownership. You can have dock condominiums, they call them dockaminiums. You can, they apply to a lot of different types of uses, but it's really the form of ownership and not the use. Okay, subdivision ordinance, this is where you establish standards for, for streetlights and, and roadways and drainage and utilities. All of that's called out in your subdivision ordinance. And generally, your condom, site condominiums have to meet your subdivision ordinance requirements. With approval process, this is the plat approval process, very tedious. Tentative preliminary plat, final preliminary plat. Then you have engineering drawing review, which doesn't even really show up here. And then you have final plat submission and it's just, nobody's doing it anymore. Whereas your local, your result, your site condominium approval is basically very similar to your site plan approval. It's whatever your ordinance generally requires at the local level. But you have to establish that at the local level and you can decide if you're gonna be flexible and allow private roads and, and public roads or just public roads. That becomes a local government decision. Any questions on that? Okay. Our next part is on making effective decisions, okay? We're gonna shift gears a little bit. So, we have our authority, statutory authority. So we have our authority, statutory authority, planning and zoning. We've talked about that. We have additional legal constraints that we've talked about. Some of them, the federal laws, the state laws. Some of the state laws are the preemption of land uses, for example, like public schools are preempted from the site plan review and approval process, um, thanks to our legislature. Um, and there are other forms of land uses that are preempted, um, thanks to our legislature. Um, case law, all, is another thing that, that guides some of the decisions that we make. And attorney general opinions also can influence because they are generally considered to have, um, the force of law until the law is changed and people, you know, I'm talking, it, it provides significant guidance, um, in interpretation basically of, of, of a, of a particular state provision. And then other ord, other local ordinances such as nuisance ordinances, there are other ordinances that may, um, come into play when you're dealing with land uses that you'll want to, um, cross-reference and, um, see if there's some, some issue related to other ordinances that may be helpful in dealing with your land use related decisions.
How much is a nuisance ordinance?
Nuisance ordinance typically deals, it's, it's a general ordinance, so it's not a zoning ordinance, it's a general law ordinance. And it's there to keep people from, um, basically not taking care of their property. So it's, it's a blight type of issues. You can't allow garbage to just pile up on your, you can't allow your grass to grow to five feet tall. Um, you can't allow, um, uh, certain odors to occur. Um, a lot of things like that end up in a nuisance ordinance and, but it's, it's something that you're not going to be grandfathered out of like you can with zoning. It's something that applies right now. So if tomorrow I basically throw a bunch of grass, garbage in my front yard and I don't pick it up, I can probably be cited, um, for a nuisance violation of some sort or a blight provision. So it just depends on how it's written, but that's what it is. So our roles and responsibilities with our three key bodies here, the planning commission, the city council, and the zoning board of appeals. Um, we've gone over, I think, the planning commission roles pretty, pretty much. Let's just say the body is appointing, um, the body, the, the, the various boards and commissions, including the planning commission. Um, the mayor makes a, a selection and then that has to be affirmed by, by council for, for the, uh, planning commission. The zoning ordinance adoption is, is a role of the legislative body. Any zoning final action. Obviously budgeting is what's approved by the legislative body, which enables the planning commission to do things like update their master plan. And then the legislative body can optionally approve the master plan if they choose to do that. And then your zoning board of appeals, which is another appointed body, they deal with variances, appeals, interpretations of the zoning ordinance, and any other duties that are established in your zoning ordinance. So a lot of times we want to work together too. There are times when you will have, uh, within the community, cross-membership and different boards. Um, you may have a, um, a, a city council member be a member of the planning commission. Um, in cities and villages, you can, you could even potentially have the mayor, the, um, city manager and a council member be, um, on the planning commission. There's a lot of different structures that are allowed, um, by ordinance or by statute. Uh, but, you know, you get to choose which one of those you choose to, 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 yeah, you want, you want, want some more night meetings? Want some more night meetings?
Such a good job I have.
Right. And you can have joint meetings like, you know, like you're doing right now. You're having, you're technically having a joint meeting to, to address some education and training. Um, and then working with regional agencies and other, um, groups to, to coordinate planning. So we've got the elements of effective decisions. Now we're talking about, we want to have information first so we understand what we're doing. We want to prepare, we want to deliberate in a manner that's respectful, and then we ultimately want to document the decision that we've made. So in terms of this, the, the approval process for a project, we want to make sure that's clear. A lot of times communities will end up establishing what's called a site plan review manual that tells you how you get through the process. So you have an application form, who you contact, where that goes. Um, this is, um, the site plan review, um, introduction and overview with a flow chart from Grand Blank Township and then there, there's their zoning board of appeals form. So the flow charts and forms are very helpful. Um, they can help guide you through the approval process. Um, so preparing for a meeting, obviously, everybody reads their agenda packets, right? Thoroughly, that's very important. I know you do. Um, you want to come prepared for the meeting and to the extent that you can, do a site visit. We're going to talk about site visits, but if you're looking at a change of zoning or you're looking at a site plan, um, it is helpful to go out and actually see the property in person because you do get a different perspective seeing it in person. At a minimum, if you can't do that, go on Google Street View and take a look at it that way because you fortunately have some other tools that are available now. So is this a site visit or is this a meeting?
It's a court. We don't get that.
This, this, this looks like a quorum to me. So yeah, that's not recommended unless you're going to do it and you're going to notice it, right? And then anybody from the public can come along with you. So just keep that in mind. Uh, and also you want to make sure that you're, um, getting permission, okay, to go on private property. Uh, this is one of those gray areas too. If you're going to, if there's a shopping center and they want to add on to the shopping center, I think it's pretty reasonable to say you could go on to that shopping center, park your car and do a site visit without permission because it's a publicly open place. But if it's a vacant lot and you want to walk that property as part of a site visit, generally you should have permission from the property owner unless it's somehow granted, um, through your process. You know, sometimes communities will ask for applicant to just grant permission to all public officials to visit the site during the approval process and they'll sign off on it and then you're free to do it. But generally you should be doing that. Try to avoid ex parte contacts. This is particularly important for planning commissioners. If the developer is on the property and they want to come and talk to you, okay, you're now entering into a discussion with them. The, the other planning commissioners aren't hearing that discussion, okay? That can be problematic. If in fact that happens to you, my suggestion would be to say, look, I'd rather not talk. I, we really, we should do this. But if they keep talking, I would recommend that you then report to the, to the planning director that I was approached, they talked to me, this is what the discussion was, please share that with the planning commission. I mean, that's kind of, that's one approach to consider taking because sometimes they won't stop talking. And, and you can turn around and walk away and leave too, but I know you're trying to not be incredibly rude, but you're also trying to do your job. So, but I, generally it's good practice to avoid ex parte contacts and have information shared by all. Yes.
And I just, you know, those of you who've done the recent training, I've told you, you can blame it on me. I've said, you know, you can't do that. So yes, you guys stay ahead.
Perfect, there you go. So it's not my fault, it's Lori's fault.
I have a question about that, Lori. The previous projects, I've always tried, you know, generally I'll meet with anybody, right? If they ask me, not making that so much anymore because times have changed. But my kind of unspoken rule before was, that's fine if I'm a neighbor that has concerns, but I'm also giving the same opportunity to the developer. Now that kind of flies in the face of everything you're just talking about now and everybody have equal information. But I know our previous council, that went on a ton, but it was never really stated that that was not a thing. Maybe it was discouraged by the way you give me right now. But I mean, I just would, I mean, should we really be avoiding that at all costs? Because of course they call and of course they say, hey, you know, and it's somebody who lives in the community too, of course, I mean.
Right. So, so again, I think there are different ways of, of saying that and trying to make it look like you're being responsive. Um, but yet, you know, yeah, um, you, you want to make sure that they know, you don't want to be in a position where you are reporting back what that conversation was. Because that, you know, you have to, you may not get it right. They're going to accuse you of not getting it right if they don't rule in your favor. So, um, again, I would, I would avoid that. Um, and the other thing too is it's not just, um, whether or not there's a conversation, but the appearance of a conversation. So, um, they see that you're meeting with the developer and then ultimately it gets approved, well, the neighbors are probably going to think that something untoward happened at that point in time. So, um, so again, so the, yeah. So, and, and like I said, you, you've always got the excuse, you can always blame it on me and say, you know, we don't want to, um, to do that. We encourage you, there, there are a number of ways of communicating. You can do emails, you can be at the meeting, um, you know, written, however you do it, but, um, you want all of the members to have the same information so that they're, that everyone is equally educated as to all of the other points.
Good question. Do we have this, right, do we have a, a provision in our site plan so that, a review so that when we do want to visit a property, the property owners already signed off on their application that we can?
Well, we have something on site plan application. We do. Site visits.
We do.
We, we do, but we also encourage you to have badge as well. And I think all of you have badges. Or if you don't have a badge.
They have, you planning have badges.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, you, you may get those then.
We just, we literally, we literally just want to do badge machine and responsibility is moving from the police department to HR. So you probably will be contacting the district for new badge. And that way we can also control all the doors and access to, and, and if someone gets terminated, we can then shut off their access line, put them on and not activate their keys.
Right. Okay, oh, one more.
Question with regard to Ethan. I mean, if, if someone, the developer approached you, what do you respond to? You have mine immediately, I'll get Brent or another department person to discuss, or whatever.
It, it, it's not encouraged at all.
Is that either?
No. We, we, we would discourage that because again, we want everybody to have that same information. Now Brent is a different story. Administration is a, is a different story. It's when you get the appointed members or the elected members that are participating. And Brent, I think you, day, day after day after day, I mean, that's what you do is you meet with the developers.
They're called pre-application.
Yeah, yeah.
They only call him when they're mad at Brent.
But all of residents, all of us have a really angry boss project in the backyard and I want to, I want to tell you a lot and I'll say, look, I'll answer your question now, I'll listen to you, but if you really want to, you know, you really want to have input in the process, you're kind of seeing me on the record. And so you send, send letters, send email, send a meeting, all with your love.
And, and that supplements our, our public record as well. So if we're pending a decision, we've got that as part of the records.
I think the problem though is that I sound very, I, a hundred angry neighbors, I am their representative, so of course I should be able to communicate with them, right? But one developer, that's bad. Like it's a, I can't say to a hundred angry developers, I'm sorry, I can't, I know you voted maybe for me and I represent you, but you got to share it with all of us. And the only way to do that is if you email, I can't come talk to you. I think it's a hard, it's hard, it's greater than.
It, it's harder for elected officials than appointed, I think. Elected officials, because you're representing them, I think it becomes harder, yeah.
And when you're meeting with residents, I'm assuming that you're taking, you're not actively participating, you're getting.
Oh, sure, I'm listening, right.
You're listening, you're not participating.
That's the point. And I'm not, none of those stuff are happening right now, so that's not, but I mean, I just, I don't, it seems like it's a harder, it just seems.
Yeah, it's not, not easy. Right. Okay, so I've got a question for you. As a decision maker, I need all the information I can get to make a better decision. I should be able to get that information any way possible. What do you think? Obviously it's a little ridiculous, but people are, do want to try to be able to get the information, but there is a limit as to how far we can go. We just talked about some of those limitations that we have to think about. So deliberation, we do have input from the public, right? And how do we deal with that? Well, I talked about setting forth the rules and I think it's important when you open the public comment with a planning or any matter, that you describe what the expectations are. You want respectful civil discourse. Usually there's a time limit and I think you want them to direct their comments to the chair and you want them to be civil. And I think if you tell them that's the rules upfront, hopefully you'll get more adherence than if you didn't explain the rules at all and people just thought they could come up and do whatever they want. And if people start to deviate from addressing the chair, then you can politely interrupt them and say, please don't turn to another audience member, we're not here to get a debate. We're here for you to say your comments to the chair and we will record your comments and, um, thank you for coming. So I think that's, that's appropriate. And being consistent, it's appropriate, if you're leading the meeting, if you're the chair, um, it's important that you treat everybody in an equal manner. So everyone's getting that same time limit and everyone's getting that same ability to ask questions and people respect that type of consistency. So communicate the procedures, comments through the chair, deliberate in the open, express opinions, use the ordinance for decisions. So those are some of the common sense rules that we try to follow. So when is it appropriate to delay action on a, on a proposal? Well, if you have an incomplete application, which rarely you do because your crack staff is making sure that all those applications are ready to go, um, extensive changes are necessary to comply with your ordinance standards, okay? So it's, there's a problem here that needs to be addressed. Uh, applicant requested a delay in writing or when necessary information from an agency or the applicant has not been received, okay? So if, if it's critical for you to have that information to make a decision to determine compliance with your ordinance, then that would be an appropriate time to delay. However, if that receipt of another agency permit can be handled as a condition, then why would you delay action? So if you, if you're waiting for a, for a road commission permit, that can be a condition of approval. And if something gets changed with the road commission permit, you can bring it back if it materially impacts the site plan. Or minor changes to the plan which are required, which don't affect the site layout and can be handled as a condition. So if they need a, if they're looking for a variance request for a larger sign and they've got this, they've got a site plan going through the process, you're not necessarily going to hold up a site plan because they're going to be going to the Z B A to ask for a variance on sign. So that's just kind of one example. Uh, so it's important to make, delay, have these delays when they're appropriate and not delay when it really isn't appropriate to delay it. Uh, documentation, when you make a motion, it's very helpful that the motion maker, uh, you, one, you've got to have somebody make a motion, someone's got to second it. It should state what the request is, okay? What are we doing? We're doing a site plan approval. What's the action? You're approving the site plan. What are the findings of fact? The finding of fact, findings of fact are, we're approving this because it meets all ordinance requirements. Um, and that this is, uh, and they've submitted the appropriate documentation and that's kind of like blends into the reasoning supporting the decision. And then conditions, if you have to condition it, then you would state those conditions and then you would end up documenting what the vote is. So, um, it's helpful to have that in all of your motions so that you're clearer as why you're taking actions and what your actions are. And conditions can be attached to an affirmative decision. They must be reasonable and they need to bear a relationship to the review standard. So if you're just, we want you to build a bigger buffer because we think a bigger buffer is better. That's not what you're supposed to be doing. You're supposed to be saying, well, you're showing a four foot berm, our ordinance requires a six foot berm, so we're going to condition approval of your site plan on you modifying the plan to show a six foot berm and we'll have administration review that site plan just to make sure that it's conforming. That's, that's a reasonable way to attach a condition. Motions, we kind of just went through this, I don't, I don't think I need to repeat that one. Um, some hints for making motions, phrase them carefully to withstand scrutiny in the court. Ensure everyone's clear on the motion. That, and so that's, a lot of that's tying it to an actual zoning standard. And if you can cite the zoning provision by number that they're not meeting is the reason why you're denying it, that's very helpful. Reference relevant sections, that's, that's part of that. And then conditions can be imposed upon any zoning decision except a rezoning unless it's a conditional rezoning.
Mark, can you comment a little bit about how they apply those conditions? Do they really get, do they really know?
Right, yeah, they've got to be tied to the ordinance. So if you, if you can point to a provision in the ordinance and you don't believe that the plan is met as presented and that making this change would then meet that provision, then you're going to specify, I think this section of the ordinance would require that they increase the landscaping or they, um, change the lighting, um, so that it doesn't spill over into the residential neighborhood. And that's what I want to see in the site plan and we'll have the administration review it and make sure they've taken care of it. That's a reasonable type of condition.
And, and just another thing with that too, it can never be based on who's in the property. So it, it runs with the land, so everything has to be related to the land itself and[1761.87] So it runs with the land, so everything has to be related to the land itself and not the jurisdiction.
What I was trying to do is get away from conditions that are just out there that have nothing to do with the ordinance or the plan.
Absolutely. Roll call vote, do we need a roll call vote? Well, the Open Meetings Act says you need a two-thirds majority roll call vote for calling a closed session. Now, planning commission rarely goes into closed session. Otherwise, votes may be by roll call, show of hands, or other method that informs the public of the vote. So what it comes down to is what do your bylaws say, right? Your bylaws is generally going to be the document that is going to identify when you have to have roll call votes, because you, a lot of communities do a lot more roll call votes than they need to, but that's okay. Sometimes you want to have that documentation of exactly who voted, and sometimes a lot of municipal attorneys will, will suggest that. It's particularly important, I think, when you're adopting a master plan, or approving a zoning ordinance, or zoning amendment, to have a roll call vote, because those are the areas where you might see the most challenge, and you want to have some good documentation. But for a site plan, for a principal permitted use, I, I don't necessarily see that it's critical, but if you're, the advice you get is to do it, then put it in your bylaws and follow it. So that's really your, your community decision as to what you think is appropriate.
We have it in our charter.
It's in your charter?
Council.
Oh, for council, interesting.
Council, yeah.
Okay. That's another reason to do it. It's also good, if it's, like, for site plans, a lot of communities will do this, if it's not a unanimous vote, then they'll do a roll call. Because if unanimous, then you know, everybody's eye, okay, boom. If it's not, then okay, let's do a roll call vote. That's another way to handle it. So let's break down this motion and dissect it a little bit. So we've got our concluding finding, whereas the above information which demonstrates compliance with the requirements of section blank, blank, blank. So you see, we're listing the ordinance, we're listing who the applicant is, then we're listing the approval type, which is a special annuse permit, we're listing the site, we're actually identifying a parcel number, and then we're identifying a decision, and then identifying conditions. So that's kind of a breakdown of all those key elements within a sample motion. So here are some sample conditions. Landscape plan will be revised to include a six-foot high wall along the western boundary as required by section 1112. Our copy of the driveway permit from the road commission will be provided. Revised stormwater calculations to demonstrate detention as the engineer would require. Waste receptacles will be moved out of a fire lane as requested by the fire chief's report, and a revised dated plan will be submitted for staff approval within 60 days. So that's a pretty good example of some solid conditions associated with approval of a site plan. All right, so let's move in, let's move into, into permit issuance and inspection. So final site plan approval does not authorize construction. A lot of times, people think that I got my site plan approved, I can go build. All that does is open the door for you to apply for permits to build. So you've got to get construction permits, you may need utility permits, you may need wetland permits, you may need building permits, you may need driveway permits. That just gives you the ability to go and get those permits. So you're gonna have to meet all the conditions of approval, plus all the other agency review. And then the approved site plan becomes the legal basis for future inspections. So permit issuance and inspection, send the letter to the applicant outlining the next steps, who is responsible, timeframe, keep a tickler file of when the approval expires. That's kind of a helpful thing to do as a municipality, to let an applicant know, by the way, your site plan's gonna expire within, you know, 90 days, you may want to do something about it. Not everybody always tracks that, but some communities will, will provide that service. That's really up to you. When, when plans for a permit arrive, assure that all conditions of approval have been met, circulate the plans to proper departments and inspectors, timeframe for conditions to occur, they need to be stipulated in the ordinance. So those are all part of that whole permitting process. Enforcement, this is the area that probably gets a lot of discussion in communities, because some communities basically, a lot of them just enforce by, by, by complaint, others actively enforce. And so that's an interesting community decision. You have to have staff and resources to, to enforce. If you don't enforce, then a lot of times, people think you don't care about the ordinance, and you can get away with whatever you want. For them to be effective, they do need to be enforced, and you need to be fair and consistent in how you apply enforcement, so you're treating similar situations similarly. Any questions on that? All right, getting down to the end, risk management, avoiding litigation. Well, you can't always avoid litigation, right? But some of the things you can do is you can manage your risk by avoiding conflicts of interest, using consistent rules and procedures, treating everyone fairly and consistently, keeping good and accurate records, and keeping up on your current training through the Michigan Association of Planning. Yes? So, so do I, so am I the only one who sees a conflict of interest here? Okay, so conflicts of interest. All right, my wife works at the law firm representing the applicant. She works for another attorney in the same firm, but not the same kind of practice. Do I have a conflict? Okay, so you're a planning commissioner, that's your situation. Do you think this person has a conflict? You have some yeses? We have some depends?
Depends.
I would say it's a maybe, it's a depends. A lot of it depends on what the relationship is. Can you, as a planning commissioner, make a totally independent and unimpacted decision knowing the situation? Are you, are you gonna look at this in a, in a way that someone who didn't know this person is gonna look at this, okay?
How can we actually be subjected to the appearance as opposed to the project? In that situation, I consider the worst thing to put in front of the judge, not if you know the authority to do that.
Sure.
And so they've never met the applicant.
Absolutely.
But if, if the decision's gonna be challenged, especially going to the public, then you would think that would be an argument that the applicant would make in the world.
The typical best practice is that if you think there is the appearance of a conflict, you, as the planning commissioner, would disclose it when that item comes up and say, "Here's the situation, my wife works at the law firm representing blah, 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 blah." You explain it, you say, I don't, you can say, "I feel like I don't have a conflict here, I feel like I can make an impartial decision." And then the planning commission should vote as to whether or not you should be excused or not. That's, I think that's the best practice. And then it becomes the planning commission's determination as to how they feel. You express your personal, and then the planning commission votes. That, I think, is the best practice.
And should, should the planning commission be making the decision based on, again, more so appearance than what the person said?
I think they should make the decision on whether they believe that that can be, the decision can be made in an independent and impartial fashion.
I found that I've had myself in that situation, like, not a conflict, but someone could perceive it the way, wanting to recall Lori. I mean, if you have any, any iota of this could be taken the wrong way, I'll, Lori, immediately.
That's good. Yes.
Get her insight, and then when it comes forward, and then bring it forward at this meeting. And I know you basically told me, you're like, nah, conflict, there's no financial, but if you want to do it, err on the side of bringing it up, because you don't want that out there in the community, that is a potential issue, particularly if there's litigation that could be involved.
I think I started with that, sort of our scene instances where somebody didn't feel that they had a conflict, said so, we're not the planning commission, or ought to decide for that, and then proceeded to be the only person hopefully supporting the argument. So again, that's why I asked the question. So the planning commission would be looking at it with respect to what, what is beneficial parents' perspective, and story, Lori, what I can say would be important.
Okay. So let's look at another situation here. Anytime a board member legitimately believes he or she cannot be impartial, be, act impartially with respect to a request, he or she should advise the board of the same, which should then be considered by the board priority action. So, yeah, if you have to ask, that's the whole thing, if it appears like there's something going on, disclose it.
And, and don't do it, and don't participate if you really have a strong belief that's, that's based on something other than your service as a planning commission member or council member, err on the side of just moving yourself.
Right. And I also believe it's very important that if you do have a conflict, that you should leave the room, okay? Absolutely don't stay at the dais there, and don't be up at the table. Even being in the room, you can be perceived as projecting influence on others, right? So it's good practice, leave the room, and get called back in once that item has been acted upon.
It's got to be an alternative.
Okay, awesome. And if it's only Board of Appeals, they can call in an alternate, so that's really nice. The statute has that all set up, you even have an alternate on standby, and they can step in and hear the case, but you don't have that with all boards. So we're putting it all together, we're getting down to the end here. We've got, our planning practice involves the combination of being persistent and being patient, right? Because we have a lot of things that don't happen overnight, and we try to use the tools that we have to really make it happen. So we're trying to have a plan and stick with it, we're trying to be patient by not expecting that everything's gonna happen during your term as a planning commissioner. And many things are being adopted and implemented over a long-term perspective, but as long as you're working towards all those things, you are accomplishing the goals of the city. And then your persistence means taking advantage of the opportunities to implement the plan. They don't come along very often. You don't have an opportunity to do a new master plan very often. You may not have an opportunity to get a certain project approved, it might be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and if you mess it up, it may go away and you may never see it. And if it's a really good project, then work to make it happen. I mean, these are things you want to do. Develop, the market can be fleeting, it can change from month to month, natural disasters occur, COVID-19 outbreaks occur, it can put the brakes on things. So sometimes, if you have a good opportunity to make something happen, and it's consistent with your plan, and it's good for the city, work hard to make it happen, try not to delay it. Try to help the developer get through the process, so they can build the project if it's good for the community. Yes?
What I'd like to see, and I've seen some of this in the past, but like, what are like, you know, great examples of master plans that were really successful? And I know parts are very lucky, but my friends have been really successful, that have unique things that parts doesn't, that we should look into. I'd like to get like, you know, benchmarking of what's out there, create, you showed some couple projects, children's new housing, I'd like to see other projects, communities have done, and how they have been learned, and do things like that.
Yeah, I, I think your staff can provide you with some of those, some of those resources. I mean, there's, there, that might be part of the master plan process, is you, your staff and your consultant might end up giving you some examples of best practices they see around the area. I think that, you know, that might be something to explore, but there's, there's some good examples. I mean, I, I, I gotta tell you, I think, I, the one thing, I'll mention this, because I think Birmingham has done a good job of adopting a plan and really sticking to it. You know, they, they, they developed that plan, the 2016 plan, and they wanted to make certain, and that hasn't been perfect, but they have really tried to implement it, and a lot of what was in that plan has been built. Not all of it has, but I think there's a lot of really good elements of that plan that have been implemented and are, are in place. You don't see many communities have the opportunity to have that, have that much development occur after you adopt a plan, and then start to see that development happen and infill. Like I said, nothing's perfect, but that is an example of a community that I think stood for the most part behind their master plan, and has done a lot of positive things, and yeah.
It's a sub-area.
What's that?
It's a sub.
It's a sub-area plan. I get, I hear you. I know, I know the story. I know. It's, it, like I said, it's not perfect, and it's, and it's complicated, but there have been a lot of things that have happened. I understand what you're saying.
They're updating it right now, I was talking about.
They are, they are in the process, yes.
Rob, you're being a little modest. Haven't you won a award for best small town plan in the nation?
Several plans, yes, yes, thank you very much.
Rob, you're being a little modest.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Well, I don't think there's any more questions, Rob, I would say there's no more questions. But I, Rob, I know that at lunch break, a lot of people are saying, oh, Lori's the one who's great.
Oh, good.
So I appreciate, on behalf of us, what you've done, and I think Mark and Lori and Bob and everybody's work, for, first of all, making us do this, and second of all, giving us a great presentation, having that person give us a presentation that is easily that accessible, or a good amount of us to ask questions and have.
It was a long time.
It was a good presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And the old holy sir or resident in our city that.
I appreciate that very much. Great questions, great interaction, I really appreciate it. You guys obviously care a lot. So, oh, evaluations, please fill out your evaluations, there's that.
Okay, I was just waiting.
Yes, right. Evaluations are very important, so Michigan Association of Planning can hear how they're doing.